A motion to approve the agenda, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, here we go, who wants to start?
Buildings and grounds.
There's my list.
Hello Eric.
Good morning commissioners. Eric Gariano, Buildings and Grounds Superintendent.
Hang on just a second Eric.
Oh.
Yes.
Alright, if you have your books from the previous work session in the department request book, it should be on page thirty-two, and in the long book it starts on page nine.
This is too much, too much. This is almost ridiculous.
I know, if I find room, we're not getting that all down yet. You guys ready?
I think so, for a minute.
Sorry, for a minute, this is like a goat rope up here.
So I don't know if you want me to start with my operating budget, or if you guys have questions, if you've looked it over. I have a few changes, not many.
You want to tell us the doctor changes?
Sure, I can do it that way. So, under travel per diem, I asked for an increase of $250, which would take it from 1,250 to 1,500. And the reason I did that is anticipating maybe some upcoming trainings where I may have to send myself or some of my staff out of town. For our particular field, there's not a whole lot in the realm of online training, and it's better to get some of the hands-on, and that's usually Los Cruces, Albuquerque, those types of places, so I just wanted to put a little bit of a cushion in there in case those prices went up.
Okay.
The next one I'm changing is rental of equipment. A couple years ago, maybe two or three years ago, we had asked for an articulating boom lift, and that was kind of on the fence. Since that time, we did actually get that lift and we've been able to use it, but it was an increase made to our rental budget to compensate for the time we were waiting on that. And we haven't really had the need for a lot of rentals recently, so I asked to go ahead and decrease that by $1,500, which would drop it from 5,000 to 3,500. There is still a need at times for us to rent equipment, so I think that's probably a significant amount to ask for.
Because didn't you have 3,000 in your?
It was 5,000.
Okay, for the boom lift?
Uh, this is under, this is under rental equipment.
Oh, rental, okay.
This is just my operating that I'm talking about right now. So I'm actually asking a decrease in that of 1,500.
Ready?
Going down to building repair, that's the line item I use for all of the repairs we do throughout the county for all the buildings. It was at 67,000, I'm asking an increase of 2,000 to take it up to 69,000. It just seems like every year, prices of material and different things keep increasing. Some are staying the same, but some of our plumbing parts, electrical parts especially, are becoming very hard to obtain, and they're going up in price. Also, we're doing a lot more maintenance on some of the other facilities that we worked previously, like the health office, Lickinger across the street, some of our community centers, they're starting to show age, and so they're requesting more work from us as far as repairs. And that's something that I probably will continue to ask to go up, just based on everyday costing, the rise of cost of everything, so I'm asking for an increase in that. Fuel, sorry, moving down fuel, we were at 10,000 when all those prices jumped up and raised, I didn't ask for an increase at that time. We were able to get through, I did have to move a little bit of funding to cover that year, but based on the upcoming season and summer and everything with prices changing, I've asked for a 3,000 increase in fuel. We did add a couple of vehicles to our fleet, so that would take that up to 13,000. Employee training, we had asked for 8,000. I was looking at getting some in-house training. Unfortunately, due to some conflicting schedules, we weren't able to get that done this last fiscal year, but what I'm going to do is encumber that funding and try to get that to fit in this year. But I'm asking for a decrease in that of 3,000, which will take it down to 5,000. We still are anticipating some other trainings coming up, and I'm going to try to schedule some of those, so I'm asking for that to go down and to leave a remaining balance of 3,000. I will go ahead and bring up the minor capital, that's Commissioner, I believe, what you were talking about, the roof lift. I requested 3,000. It was a used unit, the unit we purchased, so it did have some wear on it, but it's in very good shape, but we're needing to replace the tires on it, they're starting to crack and show wear. I don't think I included my prices, I can show you guys if you'd like, I have a couple of prices that I got quoted, if you want to see them. Okay.
As long as they're current, because them change on a regular basis.
I actually asked for, the price I got was about 2,000, the reason I asked for 3,000 was to cover any freight or shipping that might be incurred, and also a change in price, so that's why I'm asking for 3,000. And I will defer comments on salaries, because I know we're going to talk about that stuff later, but unless you have questions relating to that.
The other amount on the, on the work, on the needing the money to put a budget on the roof.
Yes sir.
Is this something that we can, I know it needs to be done now, is this something that we can put on the ICIC deal and ask for?
We came up with, we're looking at another year and a half on previous funding, and the roof needs to be replaced now. And we know, like this year, we got nothing, all of our projects were one, one and a half million plus, and we had no funding this year for those micro items, so we may or may not, it's a shot in the dark.
So which option are you thinking we can, we can do here?
So, looking at those, there was two different options that I looked at, and also had Trent look over with me, and what we came up with was option 1C for the west side, well let me give you a little history real quick. We're looking at two, the two housing pod areas at the facility, and this is at the Otero County prison facility. The same facility we just did the roof and the admin on. Of course, the building is actually this year, I believe 20 years old, as of this year. And those roofs are a TPO membrane roof, which they're failing now, they're worn in, they've basically given all the life they can give. The west side roof is in a little bit better shape than the east side, it's got some signs of wear and some edging tearing off, but there's not a whole lot of major problems with the roof, other than it needs to be recoded. And that's where I came up with the option 1C, it's a partially reinforced Liquitec, which is basically a product that they come in and they spray over, or roll over the roof, and it seals what's already there. This pricing includes them going through replacing any flashings, any major problems that they see in the current roof, and basically bringing it up to what would be a standard that they will stand by. And the warranty on this one is a 15-year warranty from Garland, which is the manufacturer, and a five-year workmanship warranty, so we'd be getting a 15-year warranty out of this roof. And the reason we picked this, 15 years will give us some time to figure out and try to find some funding if we have to do a full replacement on this roof. But we believe we can save what's there going with that option on that side. And the cost of that one was about, let me see, was 450,555. They did give us pricing, they gave us three options, they gave us pricing to do one side, the other side, or both together. And I believe it's all in there, but I think it'd be best to break these up and do them separately, do them, try to get them both done, but we did them in separate prices so that you guys can see, and you guys can ultimately decide what you think we need to spend on it. The east side roof, for whatever reason, has been, has really taken a toll from the wind, the sun, the rain, lack of maintenance, portions of it have been torn off in the corners. That roof actually did have a spot that leaked, and so it was coming through inside the building. And they've temporarily fixed those issues, but this roof is in some serious need of repairs, so it's going to need a little bit more extensive work. And on that one, we looked at doing a fully reinforced Liquitec, which is, they go in, they do a thermal scan, which is they check for any areas of moisture, they'll cut out those areas, replace any insulation that needs to be replaced, they reinforce all the edges, new drip edge, they replace any of the membrane that needs to be replaced, they will recode everything, check all the seams, make sure there's no leaks or anything like that. And this one carries a higher warranty, because it is a better product, and the warranty on this one is 20 years, I believe. There's a 20-year warranty on this one with a five-year workmanship warranty.
And what was the warranty on the other one?
15 years.
With the five-year?
Yes, with a five-year workmanship warranty. And Garland is the company we used to do the other roof, and we worked with them, they were a very good company, they oversaw the entire project, they made sure that their contractors came in and applied their product in the proper manner, if it wasn't done that way, they may not be doing it. So it was, it was a very lengthy project, Trent oversaw that project, and so far we haven't had any issues with it. And they also did the roof of the courthouse, same thing, and they only use approved contractors that go through their standards and their training, so they make sure that it's done correctly. And this pricing does reflect a 30% increase, that was to cover any of things like the insulation, or anything that we may tear off and run into, because we don't know obviously what the rest of the roof looks like, we only can see what we can see.
So the total on that is the 1,000,000?
1,07334, if my math is correct. And my calculation. And so, in speaking with the representative, he did tell me that this is an 8% increase we did this, we had them do a, we had them overlook the roof when we did the first project, and it's gone up 8% at that time, I believe it's been about a year. And he said we can expect an 8 to 10% increase every year from now on, based on just product and labor costs, it's going to keep going up. And of course, if we put off any more, if we put off any longer doing this work, of course the roof is going to deteriorate more, causing us to have to look at a different option. So these are based on what we saw, and we just went out, I want to say it was within the last month, month and a half, that we went out and did this. We actually went out with the representative to contractors out there, so they got to actually see the job site, and they bid these, and this is based on what they bid. So this is, these prices are the low bid of the three contractors that we had up there.
So what is the difference between option 1A, that says both east and west for 934,000 versus option 2A for 1.1 million?
So, the way they priced it out was, they gave us prices based on both to do the same work on both roofs, but they don't both require the same amount of work, if that makes sense. The west, the west side does not require the same level of work that the east side does, and so the way he priced it out, this would be doing the same, the same work on both roofs, but they don't both require them.
So then do we use the 8.65 number? If it's, I don't, I don't know what the two different prices are for. It says attachment C bid form, line item pricing breakdown, and then it says option 1A, both east and west, and it has 934,000, then it says proposal price, 165,000.
So 934 is what they, what Garland says it should cost. The 8, the 8.65 was what the low bid came in at. So, they priced, they priced it based on other jobs and what they've done, so that was the actual cost. They did give us a little bit of a break, which is what, is what the 8.65 is.
And then you added the 10% for unforeseen, is that added to that number?
That's added to that number, it's actually 30%.
So that'll be your other number to come.
So that's the 10% that's two pages over, why it's higher?
Yeah, which is going to come into the 1,000,000?
The 1.3, actually 1.1, with the discount of doing both?
They're actually giving us better pricing on, on all the pricing. He did lower it to what the original, they had quoted us an original price, and he amended that and sent it to me, so these are actually better prices than what they had initially given us.
Neither one of these are the roof replacement, they're just temporary fixes?
Yes, this is not a total tear-off, this is to, to go with what's existing and replace what's bad, and to try to reinforce that to give us a few more years. The product is really a very good product, I should have taken some pictures and shown you the roof across the street, but it's, it's a pretty nice product, I mean, since they've done that in the rains we've had, we have not had any issues across the street.
Is it the same coating stuff we put on the other stuff Trent? Is this the same coating that we put on the other part of the building?
No, no, that was a whole different, that was a membrane, a whole new membrane.
Oh, that's right, because it was over there. They did put a coating on top of that though, remember it was?
Different type, does it, so.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, this is a completely different roofing system, this is, this is made to go over the TPO roofing.
Well, I can tell you if water gets in and starts leaking, that's still the spray-on insulation on the roof, and that, those pods?
Uh, yes.
And you're going to be in there, that'll be coming down, you'll be having to redo all of that, so that number will probably be half of that again, if it gets in and destroys that. Is it leaking now?
Not since they went in and made the repairs, but they're already starting to wear and look pretty bad. So they're going to have to do it again, or they're going to have to keep on continuing to do that. And my guess is that some of the areas, other areas that are showing screeum and starting to wear, we're going to have leaks in those areas as well.
I'll make one thing easy, I say yes on the main chain. How's that?
That's really easy.
I'll take that.
Take the easy part.
I'll take that.
How hard is that? To change the name of a department?
Easy.
Okay, so you can just type it in there, there's no legalities, we've got to go through?
Settings, I change the name.
Okay, so we don't have to jump through any legalities and no?
You'd be doing the interior repair too. It's a big, there's a lot of money down there, sitting there, we need to take care of it.
I think so too. Yep, that's what I was just fixing to say, especially after our representative's fought so hard for us to keep it.
So me personally, I'm good with that.
I like option 2A, that's...
And what we can do is, I can actually go over this again with our representative, and if need be, I can have him come down and maybe give us a little bit better explanation of what they're looking at doing. They're, basically, they're the same, the same process, it's just, one, like I said, one roof is far off worse than the other, so there's a little bit more involved, and because of that, they have to change a little bit of their procedures and product, and that's where the increase in cost goes up. But they don't both require the same level of work, so that's why we looked at two different options.
Seems like the west side would be worse, if that afternoon is unbeaten on it.
I, we have yet to figure out why that's not the case, but it's, it's starting to show that, especially with the winds that we've been having lately, it's, it's done quite a bit to those roofs.
Do you have any input on the options?
No, Eric and I have discussed it pretty extensively, and we agree on that. The one end, if we catch it now, the Liquitec coating is plenty, the other end's too far gone for just the basic coating, it really needs the double reinforced. Just in the year time between the two cost analysis is on it, has, it's really gotten a lot worse. But if we catch it now, we won't have very minimal replacement, and like Eric said, this is designed in with a 30% replacement cost in there. And they get in there and start working on it, and we don't have to replace that much insulation or decking, then we'll actually get a reimbursement back out of it, but we were just kind of figuring worst-case scenario. Just looking at it, it doesn't look like there's going to be very minimal, some around the edging of both pods, and some random areas around some air units and stuff like that, but very minimal.
So you're thinking this option 2A is the best one, to do both of them?
Was it the double reinforced? It's been on mine since I looked at it. 2B, 2A, okay. I don't remember how he broke that down.
It said, well you got 2B and the 450, and then the 619?
Yeah, I think so.
The 2A.
Like I said, what I can do is I can reach out to him and clarify that, and make sure that that is covering everything we need. I think worst-case scenario, it would be more than what we need, but if we figure for that amount, like Trent said, we can always go down if we need to.
So would you rather do the 1C for the west and the 2B for the east, I mean, are those your preferred options?
In our discussions, that's what we felt would suffice the problem, to try to keep costs down.
And how both these options did 15 years, and extending the life of that 15 roof.
I think it's actually 20-year warranty, isn't it, on that 1C west?
Yes, that's, that's actually, yeah, I'm here on 2B and the other one's a 15.
So going with 2A, it's about 120,000 more?
If you guys think 1C and 2B are best, then that's what we need to do, I mean, I think. Because you said you thought that 2A was a little more than we needed?
I think that's our best option. One thing the manufacturer was also going to throw in there is, they get a lot of, they have a program in there, HVAC program, that they use the inmates to, and teach them to maintenance HVAC equipment, so they're on those roofs a lot. So in these prices, they're reinforcing the traffic areas and around the units to try to protect the roof a little better as well. Because I think Gerald, you saw it when we were down there last night, we're already abusing around those.
So 1C is 45555, and then 2B is 619979, which adds up to 1,07534.
Yes.
But if you go to option 2A, then it adds up to 1.193, what's the difference? But if you go to option two A, it, then it adds up to one point one nine three. What's the difference?
And that, that's something that I would need to, to reach out and ask him. I, I believe that that is going with a fully reinforced on both roofs. Which is, which is why it's a cost increase.
The only thing we also have to figure in here is the gross receipts tax, cause that's not figured into his quotes. So what we budget will have to have that figured in.
Are we tax exempt?
You would think.
You would think.
I really don't think that the two A is necessary for, for both of them. It was like Eric stated, the current roof's twenty years old, that TPO, the life expectancy is about twelve years out of that, so we've gotten a lot more. This coating is pretty much the same thing. We guarantee it for fifteen and twenty on these two options, but most likely get a lot more out of that if the maintenance is kept up, which we really got their attention as far as maintenance, um, here lately, so.
So, both of these options, Garland will be there to do the inspections like they did the other one?
Yes.
To make sure it's applied right and?
Yep.
So the different, option two A is an additional hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars to get it reinforced? And you said it doesn't need the reinforcement?
Doesn't necessarily need it. It's not a bad thing if we did. I mean, it depends on what you guys would like to budget for it. Right. We were just trying to save as much money as possible.
Well, it looks like they're, they're giving you about a fifty thousand dollar decrease if you go with the option two A. Because that's, it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollar difference between the four fifty and the six nineteen, which would be, I'm sure that if you did both of them to the max as the worst case scenario one, that's why they're giving you probably a fifty thousand cut.
Right.
On that too. So.
And I've slipped, but I think if memory serves me correct, I think we just basically gave two different options if you guys chose to do one side or the other. I think that's how we did it. So if we're looking at doing both, yeah, we're probably okay with going with two A. But again, I can, I can reach out to him and he can give me a thorough explanation of what that option actually is and if it will work for us, just, just to be sure.
I'm still leaning towards two A, just because of the possibility of the reinforcement. If we don't need it, then good.
It would provide the twenty-year on both ends of the building.
Right, yeah. It doesn't, it, it's not gonna hurt to go more. Um, I think like Trent said, we were just looking at cost. We're trying to think of a. I guess when you get up that high, it's not really. Hundred thousand dollars is, it's still a lot of money, but.
Pick it all up.
Y'all wanna do the, the two A one then?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Trent. And the last thing I had for discussion was what Commissioner Barella brought up about changing our department name. That's the last thing.
Well, that's, I'm fine with that. We do have another thing to discuss and this into your department is the cleaning deal. We might as well get that hashed out and out of the way.
Alrighty.
While you're sitting up here. So did you get those pictures put on?
I did not. I, I chose not to do that. I sent them to you. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look over. I kinda figured what I would do is let you guys basically let me know what you think.
Your, your scope of services is bathrooms and floors and trash?
Yes, ma'am.
And from the pictures you sent, I mean, there was no pictures of the bathroom that I seen?
I did not take pictures of the bathroom.
But, um, everything else looked like it was done.
Yeah, I, I will say that I think to say that the facility is not clean is not a fair statement. I'm sure there are areas within the facility that are not completely clean, but a lot of those areas are not public areas. We have access to. A lot of that's private workspace and areas that are hidden and behind files and bookshelves and those types of things. So, I mean, without a more specific what is dirty, I, it's kinda hard for me to, to say anything.
So what all buildings do you maintain? This one, that one, and what else?
We do the administration building, the annex, the courthouse, the sheriff's office, uh, dispatch, the extension office, the, the road shop, um, and we are soon to be doing the emergency services building. So we clean those on a daily basis.
And, and I think what I read is you put like a possibility of hiring another part-time, um?
We, we currently have a part-time position open.
Okay.
We just have not been able to fill it.
So I can tell you what I've instructed Eric to do in my office is please vacuum the floors, empty the trash, and don't touch my desk. That's my personal area. I'll take care of my desk. So I don't know what else is there left to do. Um.
And the same, might hunt your guy down and find the vacuum cleaner and do it myself?
And if it is requested of us, we will go in and vacuum or do whatever extra duty somebody might ask, but we don't go, we don't make it a habit based on past experiences and, and incidents that have happened to get into those personal workspaces for, for various reasons, you know? We work with lawyers, judges, uh, in the sheriff's office, uh, your offices, and there's a lot of confidential information, personal stuff that's laying out. Um, and we just try to avoid that as much as possible.
I, I have several pictures of public areas that are gross. And it, I don't think it's, makes a good face for Otero County. I can, I can show you on my phone. I didn't like make a slideshow or anything, but in the bathrooms, in our lobby area, underneath the water fountain, it's not clean. Would you like to see those pictures or would you like me to email them to you later?
You could, you could show them to us.
Okay.
I think our deal is that your, your job is not to dust and do that kind of stuff.
It is not.
This is just general thinking.
The floors and the bathroom.
This is soap that's just, people have missed, I guess, it's quarantined on the ground. Um, stains in the car, on, this is in the bathroom. Um, this is the wall. This is actual soap on the ground. It's not a sustain, it's actual soap on the floor in the girls' bathroom. Um, water stains. This is the wall. There used to be soap dispensers here, but this is just stains going down the wall. This is around them. I mean, I know there's hard water, but this is around the sink, right in the toilet. Um, this is underneath the water fountain. You can just see the grime all built up in the corners. This is, this uses a hard one to see, but this is the spit all over the, the windows in front of the girls. Um, can you see it? Little? Yeah, that's a hard one to take a picture of. This is the door going out from my front lobby. This is in the corner in the front lobby, in between the desks. This is just, it's not clean. Yeah, this is where they, they used to wax our floors, but they don't really anymore and they moved the furniture a little bit to put in the new time clock and we have stains from where it was waxed and not waxed.
What's the bowl on the floor for?
The what?
The bowl on the floor.
Oh, for my dog?
So from what you saw, Eric, are those things you can address?
Uh, yes, we can. I mean, and I understand that. And I don't know if you've ever walked through the building, but I mean, there's a lot of stuff in the way. I think unnecessary stuff. There's cabinets, there's plants all over the lobby area that have been placed in there. Every time we go to do the floors, that stuff we would have to move, but we didn't place it there and I don't believe it's appropriate to have it there. Why it's there, I don't know. But I mean, those thing, those areas in there, a lot of that, yes, we haven't had time to go in. We do need to go in and do a good, uh, do a good scrubbing of the floors, but the floors are mopped. They are swept. They are buffed in the areas we can get to. But, and I, I talked with Commissioner Mathely about the bathrooms. I did address those issues and there's things we can do to fix that. Like going in and putting in an FRP or some type of site of some type of wall covering that can be wiped down. That's years and years. That's not something recent. It's been like that. It was a poor design. The dispensers leaked. People washed their hands. They have water on their hands. It gets all over the wall, gets all over the sinks. You have to wrap around and get to the, to the tile dispenser, you know, and we try, we go in early in the morning. We're out of there, try to be out of there by eight o'clock for daily use. So I mean, if people are using the bathroom throughout the day and I can't control how much water they use to wash their hands or how they're flailing their hands around or anything like that, so I mean, it's not till the next day that those things are addressed. But for what she showed us, those are some things that we can get cleaned up. Some of those stains she was showing on the tile, it's, it's beyond just scrubbing it. It's gonna have to be replaced. And if that's what we have to do, we can go in and do that. But that's, that's normal use for that building. I mean, but to say that, that, that it's dirty, I mean, the floors, like I said, the floors are swept, the floors are mopped and cleaned on a regular basis.
I think maybe a full day of good deep cleaning, and I hate to have them come in here on a day off or something, but it'd be easier to come in on, I'm assuming, I don't know, you guys open on Monday? You know, and just give it a good deep clean and something to start with. I think definitely be hiring somebody over that. Let's go from there.
Yeah, maybe a deep cleaning and maintaining it. Oh, another problem we have too, and we could probably help out a little more is the, um, janitorial closet is locked at like two, two-thirty.
No, it's always locked.
Oh, it's always locked.
The janitorial closet is always locked.
It, it remains.
We have no access, we have no access for years. We have brought it to the, the county manager's attention on multiple occasions. Not a person, an elected official in that building has a key to that office to access a wet floor sign, to access a mop, to access paper towels. Buildings and grounds leaves here at two-thirty every day. Yes, Eric is on call, but if somebody walks into that office in the hallway at three o'clock on a Friday and spills their slurpee in that lobby, in that hallway, someone walks in and slips, who's on the hook?
Is it appropriate for the elected officials to have a key to the closet? Do you have keys to the closet?
We can do that.
I'm just wondering.
I am here till four-thirty. I have no problem going and mopping up a mess. I can do it. We've never been called about something like that. If we have and it's been during regular hours, we've taken care of it. The reason we don't just give out keys to everybody is because of the equipment we keep in there, the stuff, the type of equipment in there. We have chemicals in there. So we don't leave it unlocked because it's right between two public bathrooms. We don't want somebody just walking in or anybody just wandering in. We also try to keep an inventory of what we have, uh, so we don't want things just walking off because it has happened even from employees, things just disappear and don't come back. That's the reason why we don't do that.
Can we not leave a key in somebody's deal for emergency services?
Uh, I, if, if, if Pamela would like for us to do that, we can leave a key or we can make one readily available. But I am here other than Friday, and then I do have a foreman that's here on Fridays and we're here till four-thirty, so we're available for those types of things.
I under, I understand Rachel's situation of something, somebody with a kid comes in, spills a coke, it needs to be cleaned up right then instead of an hour long trying to chase somebody down. If they have an emergency key, I don't think they're gonna be out there cleaning every day, but if you have an emergency spill, it needs to be cleaned up.
Sure, that's okay, we can do it.
And I don't know what the?
And that would give us access to, um, the room if we needed in our own offices, that we could help with the cleaning in our own spaces.
And if you're worried about somebody taking something, put a camera facing that thing and turn it on. We got cameras everywhere else.
I don't think it's a matter of somebody taking something, it's a matter of reporting it if anything's damaged or broken or any of that, instead of just putting it back and saying, oh, cause this, because we do use those on a daily basis. So that would have to be communication that would have to be kept up with us, not just oh, this happened or, you know, and properly cleaning it if they're gonna use it and those types of things.
On that, kinda the same thing, um, officials, uh, the dumpster is locked now, which I understand. We had a problem there where people, you know, everybody and their brother was bringing their own personal trash and dumping it in, in the dumpster in our parking lot. So Buildings and Grounds has now gone to locking that dumpster. The, the issue on that is like on, say, Friday afternoon, if somebody had an enchilada dinner and everybody had enchiladas in the building and we can't get to throw the trash, the leftover containers into the dumpster, then those sit in our offices over the weekend? And I don't know if y'all can imagine what refried beans being in an office for two days smells like. That might be something else that would be helpful if we could have access to, at least throw the trash so that we don't leave it in our offices over the weekend.
If you pack it in, pack it out.
There you go.
It's like the wilderness. Pack it in, pack it out.
What we can do is going to change that back to, uh, I think we lock it at three when our last guy leaves, but I can provide them with the code to that. It would just be irresponsible to make sure it gets locked back up because that is the problem in the, at night and on weekends, we had a, an automotive shop over here across the street that was dumping mufflers and who knows what else in there, plus anybody looking to dump anything. We've had couches, we've had chairs just thrown in there because it's open and it's available. That was the reason we went to lock it. But we can provide them with the code for that.
And I, I understand that completely, but there's, I don't feel there's not a reason that you could not give them a key to the janitor closet and a key to the dumpster for if there's emergencies that, and if there's trash on Friday afternoon that they had a party, then they can throw it away and lock it back up.
Sure, sure. It's, it's never been requested of us, but we can absolutely do that.
And the deals on the mops and stuff? You know how tools are, if they don't get broke, they're not getting used. And that's, that's the fact.
Absolutely.
If you're gonna use them, they're gonna get broke soon.
And I don't have a problem with that. A problem I have is if it's not, for, for, the information's not provided that it was broken to us.
How do you want it provided?
Uh, if, if they break it, they can call us or she, they can send us an email saying, hey, this happened, or we weren't able to do this and that. But for my guy to walk in there at six in the morning and go, why is my bucket gone? Why is my mop not here? What happened? I mean, that sets our time back even more. So it's just open communication, whatever they prefer.
Well, we're all adults here, so I think we can adapt to this.
I agree.
I have a checkout form for tools and stuff like that on the inside. They take a screwdriver, they put their name and then when I, that screwdriver isn't back where it goes, I see something's missing. I can say, look, who checked out the screwdriver? Go find it, you know, and then they can make notes, um, the, we're out of soap, we're out of, you know, on that little sheet, or broke it, or, and you put on the inside of the closet so it's not seen to the public, but as soon as you open the door and the mops are missing, well, Rachel's mopping, so I hate to chase, have you chase it down if you need it, but at least you know who would have it.
Okay.
Okay.
So I can tell you, I know, I know you two ladies are not gonna like my answer, but I'm a no on the cleaning service. I mean, that's gonna open the door up for Sheriff Black, that's gonna open the door up for, ah, your door never opens up, Mark.
Commissioners, if we could have Cynthia come up from purchasing, just to talk a little bit about what, and I, I don't wanna compare us to the city, but they do go out to RFP and have some of their buildings actually professionally cleaned. My concern really with the, with the annex building, I understand that the county has ten buildings. But to me, the face of the county is the annex building. We see roughly fifty people a day from the public passing through those, through that building. And so, to me, I would think that you would wanna put on your best face forward. I totally agree with Eric on the plants and the personal, and I, I totally agree with that. But the cleanliness is a health and safety issue to the public, to your constituents. The door handles being cleaned, the front doors being wiped down, basic things that personally, myself, I worked at a bank in Tularosa, I was there for ten years. We didn't have a, we had a cleaning service come in. They decided they didn't want, they no longer wanted to clean it. That was back when the bank was in a trailer, okay? So what they did was they actually incentivized the employees to clean. So they paid the employees that, there was five of us, forty dollars a week to maintain, to do janitorial. So, and that was everything from dusting, vacuuming, emptying trash, windows, bathrooms. And that was done because it was a community bank, and we wanted, you know, paid extra money, and we were incentivized to do that. So I would just like to, to bring that up, that city, the city actually uses a janitorial service on some of their buildings. That's how we got the, the quote, was from Cynthia, who had reached out to the city to find out how they do it. So, I understand it's, it's a big dollar amount, and I understand that we're saying one building out of the ten.
But Rachel, if you have a cleaning service, there's still gonna be soap get spilled on the floor, there's still gonna be water dripped across the deal, there's still gonna be paper towels underneath your sink, because that's a public deal, and that's how they operate.
I, I understand that, Gerald, but I'm saying the, the lack of cleanliness and maintenance on that building, that building has been painted in twelve years since it's been there. When was the last time this building was painted? When was the last time those floors were stripped and waxed? This is maintenance that preserves the building in itself, not just the basic cleaning. So, the, the lack of love and tender care for the building itself is, we're bringing, we're gonna end, we're gonna end up real soon over there with having to replace all that flooring. The tiles are bubbling up.
The flooring already needs to be replaced, but that's for other reasons.
Right.
There's, there's, furniture's been dragged across that floor where it's, it's beyond us doing a, a scrub and a waxing on it. It's, it's gonna look terrible. You can't fix that. And, and I can't control what they're doing within their, within their departments. I, I put it out there that if they need help moving furniture, all they need to do is call and let us know. And maybe not so much the treasurer's office, but the other two departments have, if you go over there and look, there's giant gashes across the floor from dragging desks and tables and whatever else. That's one of the reasons that we don't put a lot of deep maintenance into the flooring any longer. But we do still clean, mop and buff those floors out, and I think they look good, other than the areas she was talking about, and that is because we haven't had an opportunity to go in underneath the water fountain and then behind some of those areas where there's plants and other things to, to do that. I don't know that you're gonna get a scrubbing, a waxing and all that out of a cleaning service. I don't think they're gonna provide that service. So if we're talking a maintenance thing, yes, but I think they're gonna go in and dust and, and mop the floors and say, hey, we're going on to the next building. That's, that's my personal take on it.
Well, I really feel instead of forty-five thousand dollar hit to the county, we need to address with Eric on the cleaning service thing. I mean, if it's stuff that needs to be touched up, then we need, it's not our three, it's Pamela's, we're scheduled a deep cleaning to come in. I can't see spending forty-five thousand dollars on a cleaning service that's gonna do the exact same thing that you are.
Would you be willing to do a one-time deep clean, so that it could...
Why can't we do that? Why can't we, I would rather pay our employees overtime and get the whole lot of them, come in maybe on a Saturday, and do a deep cleaning if, if we can do that.
Eric, can you be ready for that?
Yes, we can figure out a way.
I mean, I would rather pay them than pay somebody else.
Our goal is just to have a clean office, so.
That's right. We don't care how it's done.
Whatever way we get there.
I'm, I'm hooked up. Give it a good scrubbing.
Sure.
Because even a cleaning service, I mean, I know in my office where I work, I don't want anybody touching my desk. I've got stuff there that nobody, it's nobody's business. So mainly, they just come in and vacuum, you know?
You know, when you, you take your car in and you say you want your car detailed, and you leave all your personal belongings in there, they throw it all in trash bags. They make it look like a brand-new car and all your personal, that's why I don't get my car detailed, because I like where all my stuff is, you know? But if that's the kind of cleaning, then all that personal stuff needs to get put away and all that before they go in there and do that. Otherwise, I think you need to take that personal stuff, and I'm not the plants, I like the, I like the plants. I think it makes it warm in there. But, but like that personal, if it's put in a box and you leave the box there, if it's in the way for the deep cleaning.
And my only disagreement with that is, I, I do believe that's on the employee. Because if, if something ends up missing, broken, then we're gonna get blamed for it, and, and I don't want that for my department. So if, if, if we're talking a deep cleaning in all the offices, all the office space and all that, and any personal items, any work items that are left on the floor or any of that, I think they need to be removed before we go in. Otherwise, we go around them. That, that's basically what we have to do now. There's, there's some offices where all we can do is get a path in there for a vacuum cleaner.
That's her office? That's my office?
And so, I mean...
I'm the first one to say, that's my office.
You know, so that, that, I mean, we can't, we can't move that every day. That's, that's not gonna happen.
I think that would be fine, Eric. I mean, as far as, as long as we schedule it, we now, we get the word out that, hey, on Saturday, whatever day, Buildings and Grounds is gonna come in, everybody take your crap, or, sorry, you know, in other words, and put it up. I, I don't see that being a problem.
I mean, I, I wanna work with them, absolutely. We can do that. I mean, it's not a matter of not wanting to, it's a matter of personnel and time and getting to be able to do that. And again, communication about things like that, then everybody has to be on the same page in that, I mean, not just their office, the assessor's office, the clerk's office, each individual employee.
When this deep cleaning deal comes through, everybody's gonna have to have their stuff put up and picked up.
And we'll communicate that to the, to the clerk's office and the assessor, both of them are out of town.
You good at that?
Yes, sir.
And the good team?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a no on the cleaning.
As long as it's clean, I'm up here.
So the adjustments we made, Julianne, if I'm understanding it right, is on the roof, we're going to go with the upper, the one that's a little bit more expensive?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right?
Yes.
Right. So reduce that fifteen thousand dollars from each of their budgets for the maintenance contracts, I can, I'll take that out.
Okay. And then the changes that you've already got them in the book, so we're good on the, and then the other ones for the tires, we're good with that one?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay, so we got that one. You going to the film thing then?
Uh, yes. Okay, we're ready, we're ready for the film liaison budget.
So Commissioner, if you recall, Jan Walco Pena, as for office space and funding, and we looked at this several years ago, we even went out to bid to bring in a contractor, which was roughly forty-six thousand dollars, and have the individual on contract doing this job, proposing different options to you. We also looked at creating its own department for those duties, and you have in front of you the budget for that, which includes some minor capital outlay. And, and just so you know, if we create a department, hire an employee, there is no guarantee Jan Walco gets it, it goes out to advertise anybody who wants it. Same with going out to contract, there's no guarantee, she'll get it. So I know she currently does that as our liaison right now, but in these instances, she may not. And then the other option is to provide her office space and some money. I don't have office space, I would have to, RB and I've kinda talked around how to widely funding, because it's not a social program like our others. And we would have to have a contract for that. So those are your options.
My personal feeling is to get rid of the thousand bucks and then no office. That's my thought.
Does the city help with this?
No.
Have we asked the city to?
She has asked.
And they don't?
And she used to be...
They previously did.
Yeah, she used to be employed at the city years ago, and then she came to us when they quit doing that and asked if we would help her, and that got turned down a few years ago.
It would be a great use of the city's lodging tax, it's supposed to fund things such as that.
They don't have that anymore.
I know they got rid of it, so, you know, they're getting anything tourism-related for some unknown reason.
I agree. We should do a lodger's tax.
For the county, county lodger tax.
Would you be able to tap into the cities? Because they are not using it, we can?
There is a county lodger tax, I did see that. I'm researching tax stuff right now, but I don't know how it would, if it would apply to the hotels in the city. It would only be useful if it did, because there's, there's not many lodging establishments outside of the incorporated areas, other than Airbnbs, and that would piss a lot of people off, so.
Yes, it would. But they're out-of-town paying us, not our locals paying us.
True.
And what was the thousand dollars worth she asked for?
Uh, travel to a conference and a camera, a couple of small things.
Printing materials, I believe.
Yeah. Which she already uses her copy, she already gets her mail here, she's on our website. We already allow her some perks.
Some support.
As our liaison.
So as of right now, what are her total expenses?
None.
Zero.
Zero.
So we're going from zero to...
She is a volunteer.
Eighty-five thousand. And, and why can't this industry support itself?
There's no revenue coming in for that.
I mean, they call her to scout out locations, this should be, she should charge for it.
One thing, if we, if we, as a county, either contracted someone or, or created this position, many other counties have a permitting process for filming in the, in, in their county and charge a fee for it, like a hundred dollars or something. That would potentially provide some revenue for funding this. I don't know if it would, it probably wouldn't cover it all, for sure. But, you know, with that permitting process comes the, the requirement to have some system and bureaucracy in place for managing it. So, right now, we don't charge anything, because we don't have any way of instituting it or controlling it or ensuring we get paid for it, so.
I mean, even, even the state of New Mexico and the federal government, if you wanna apply for a permit, you get to pay for it now, even though our tax dollars are going to pay for it, and they're still charging it for administration fees. And if we're gonna be hauling people around and show them our beautiful white sands, that's not free, that needs to be charged.
White sands does charge a fee. They get their, they get their cut.
With her, with her toting them around, per se, and I don't know if you've ever dealt with the movie when they're scouting something out, I mean, it's months of investment of time that you have to put into this before they find a spot and happy, and then they want this moved and that moved, and it's not a, an easy process. And then they change their mind. And if they have a little bit of investment into it, maybe it'll work a little better. I love her, I think she does good, but I just, I don't, I say no.
If you approved the thousand, it would probably be an every-year request.
One thousand?
Possibly more, you know, there's no guarantee, it would just be a thousand she requests every year.
We need somebody to work that end of the business, here, because the movie industry does come here. Need somebody doing that relations, but for a permanent employee with all the benefits and everything, and then another office space, computers, telephone, blah, blah, blah. I would rather get, give her some money for some of her expenses and hopefully she's still, that is my view.
Are we allowed to do that?
That's been my question.
It, because it is, one, it's, it falls under the Economic Development Department, it's sanctioned economic development. By giving the money, we are getting something in exchange, we're getting promotion of the county and interaction with the film industry, so I hate the anti-donation clause, it's always, you know, like on the fence, there's something, is something an exception, but I think the argument can be made that there's an exception, and the government, the state government is sanctioning this by the system that they've, they've created around this.
The Economic Development Group, did they fold, or are they still in business? They still doing good? Put the one up there by the colleagues, one of them.
Oh, the Otero County Economic Development District?
Are they still?
I don't think so. I don't, I don't think, I think they're closed, but the state economic development, they're still going and going. Well, I would, I would be willing if it's legal, if we're good to do it, I wouldn't mind giving her a thousand dollars to just help her out a little bit, but I, I can't see adding this on our budget. I mean, eighty-three thousand is just not the right economic time for us right now, I don't think, so.
And I, I don't even know if she is interested in that, it's just an option for you to consider on how we can approach this position, but all her request was, was for the thousand dollars.
And still the stuff that we're already doing for her, supporting her in a little way, we're gonna continue to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you good at that?
I'm good with that.
All right, we'll have RB draft and agree, and that'll be on future agendas.
Okay. Okay. Already done the cleaning for the annex?
Yes, you did it. That was a no.
Yeah, we already did that. Okay, so we ready to move on to capital outlay?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Otero County IT Director Abe Zaldana and Mr. Daniel Kost from HB Pro Sound. Otero County IT Director Abe Zaldana and Mr. Daniel Kost from HB Pro Sound.
Good morning.
So, uh, I was, uh, we, we had, like previously, we had been working like on the previous budget session. Uh, we had gone over the, the budget to upgrade the microphones here. So there was, there was initially two quotes here. The, the Sennheiser were our microphones and then our, our new audio mixer as well. So here on this first page, it covers the commission room. And I know you had, and then the, the other one was covering the, the other one was covering, there was initially two rooms that you had, that we had planned. But then I, I had, I informed Mr. Daniel that, that we had removed one of the rooms. Cause initially there was two rooms that we, we were planning to upgrade. So, um, what basically I told him is that we're, we're just, we just want this room and the, and the overflow room. Which we're considering that one as an overflow. So, uh, and I told him you had basically some other questions and how this was gonna work, so.
Is it gonna fix this echoing problem that bounces around in here?
Absolutely, I, I do this for a living. So, I have my phone out with my app figuring out what frequency it is. And what it is, it's today's tools make it a lot easier to shape the sound. And what you have currently is that you have an older sound system, right? I know the cardiac pattern of this, so the speaker that are there, if I turn it this way, there will be no feedback. But each microphone is feeding into the system with an analog circuit. And that's what you have in that corner. That's a Mac Eboard. Where it's an FX twenty-two. I've been with HB for twenty-two years and I've done a lot of boardrooms and I've done a lot of upgrades. What I propose, what my company proposes is replacing the microphones with a newer microphone, digital microphones. What it, what that does, it, there's a lot of RF interference, probably not here, but this will make it a lot more narrow. And it's also en- encrypted. So for security reasons, you wanna have something, it'll be closed circuit. You can't have anybody eavesdropping. The digital mixer, which is probably one of the more expensive products on here. Uh, it, that gives me all the tools to shape the sound, to eliminate feedback. To add just a millisecond of delays to not give it a chance to create feedback. Um, we're also proposing upgrading the speakers. That's an older generation Bose speaker. We would put in a, a newer speaker that is also Teams approved. Which goes into how we would bring the, the, the actual boardroom into the twenty-first century, allowing you for streaming. Uh, directly to a YouTube page or Facebook page. Um, or directly to your page on, on the city's website. That with the overflow room will allow interaction. So we can have a Teams meeting and have them join the meeting. The same, in the same token, we can have, without going into Teams, direct overflow. In other words, wherever we capture in the cameras, we're proposing three cameras for three different positions. They're broadcast cameras, so they're, they're high definition. And that would give you a direct feed upstairs to your overflow. Um, everything that is spoken into the microphones will be split off the digital mixer. One to the county clerk, one to the PA system. And then it's encoded and sent up through the video upstairs where it's decoded on your system upstairs. So that's the way that would, that would work. Uh, and we have, we've, we've done several of these back in El Paso. There is a, uh, theaters and, and that become boardrooms. And we have to be able to be flexible. And it's something that I think will, will solve a lot of issues, but then the equipment that we're proposing is really good equipment that will last a good, many years. Uh, some of the equipment that I've installed has lasted twenty years, some of the first things that I put in. Cause it's professional equipment, it's, it's a different price point and it's different use, so. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Can you have one of the big ones? One of my big deals is when we're having a meeting in here, I would like to have camera coverage of this whole room. And, and a microphone back there somewhere. Because there's been times, there've been discussions that it gets a little heated from here to there. And if it has to ever go to, uh, the sheriff, I'm gonna interrupt, I want video of the whole thing, what, what started it and what caused it and proof of it. Is this system going to do that?
Well, this system goes, it goes into a video switcher that creates camera, camera. Um, if you want individual recording of each feed, uh, that would take some extra equipment. But with the three cameras, you will have all access of all the rooms. So you will have the operator be able to move, uh, the cameras. And with three cameras, we cover all angles. So we'll have one coming back this way and then two coming back this way. And their PTZs are pan tilt zoom. There is a controller for them and there's preset, uh, positions. So I can hit a button and it'll go right to that position. A wide shot, a tight shot, preset on three different cameras.
I wanna be able to hear or have a record of what was said out there.
That would be just adding one, uh, and I would, I would do an overhead microphone. I would do one that would be in ceiling, that would be concealed, that would not necessarily be coming back to the speakers, but will be captured on the clerk's side.
Cause there'd be instances that stuff was said back there that I, we can't dare appear to see what started this whole little.
Fiasco. I understand. So it, it would be something that we could add, add on. Cost, you're looking at about an additional hundred and twenty dollars on the low end, two hundred on the, on the high end. I'm thinking of a crown mic that I use for custom board protection as you come into the country. It's a little microphone that you don't even tell it's a microphone, but it picks up everything. I've also used these in child guidance centers where I put it in the ceiling and you can't tell there's a microphone. And with that, that can capture the whole room and will not have feedback because it won't go into the PA, it would only go to the clerk. So whenever you need to play it back, you'll be able to capture that. Which leads me to another point, there is the streaming device which can, which will stream, it's also a recording device. So you can record on an SD card the meeting, uh, which would be the audio and the video.
Did we get a new estimate on all this, did we quote? Or did any of this change from the original?
I don't think it's changed as, as it stands right now. I think that's why I'm here to finalize what, what we need to add or take away. In this instance, we would add the microphone. And there is some stuff we have to take away for the initial two rooms. And when we, when we look at this, we would take away one of the Logitech meetup microphone.
Which one are you looking at?
I'm looking at ticket one zero three six oh nine.
Okay. So you said take away what?
On the Logitech meetup, the first line.
Okay.
We would take that one off, that's a thousand one hundred less.
Okay.
The next two items, those are collaboration systems. Uh, if I wanted to present here, this collaboration system allows me to tap into your, your proposed video system. But at the same time, it allows us to connect through meetup, through Teams. So that way we will make these rooms accessible to each, and you wanna see what's going on up there, we do need the, the two barcodes.
So, would you need a microphone upstairs that's recording too?
The Logitech meetup with microphone, that will actually come back down. Uh, because that'll go through Teams and will be captured here.
I mean, if, if there's a crowd of people up there and we're doing, and they're.
On an overflow, on an overflow, I don't have that set up. But again, I can add that functionality as well. Put another microphone upstairs where that one will be fed down here. But, um, the operator would have control to have you hear what's going on up there.
Yeah, but would it be recording all the time?
That's just a matter of routing it to the clerk, that's all. So all I have to do is route it on the digital console. Because it's a digital signal, once analog goes in, becomes digital, I can do whatever I want with it. And I can split it, duplicate it and send it to her. So that's, that is a capability.
Okay, Pamela, if we had to use an overflow room, would, would there be a deputy up there scanning?
That is one of the questions, if we have a deputy up there, in addition, we may need another administrative person up there. Keeping track of who's up to speak next, um, letting the person know when it's time for him to speak. I think it would be up to the sheriff if he wanted a deputy up there in addition, but yes, we would need administrative staff up there as well.
So if you had that, would you still need the additional microphone? Yeah, I'm getting a head shake.
Absolutely, yeah. Yes, cause if you wanna have any kind of communication, you would. Now, because with Logitech, that is a microphone and a speaker and a camera. And it's designed for smaller spaces. Because everybody should be paying attention, that's how I'm designing the room. Um, but that is one, only going, when it's going through me, through meeting. If it's just an overflow, that means they have no interaction coming back. They're only listening and seeing. It's only when we actually put a meeting together that you'll have that interaction going, going back over here. So you would see on your screens here what's happening up there with the one camera. And what they would see down there would be the switching feed that the operator's providing.
So it's kinda like a Zoom meeting where you can, whoever's on can participate?
Right, the, the difference with that is, and, and I've, I've ran, early on in the pandemic, one of the school boards tried to do that. And it's like, no, that's not the way it works. Everybody was on the Zoom meeting and it was, that's not the way it works. It's only two members in the Zoom meeting. The, the board and the overflow. So there's only two people on the two-way communication. It's, it's who's speaking and who's being shown on the screen, that is the next person. So the operator has the ability to pull back and show three and then show four and then show the overhead, just with the switch. And another one of the sources for the switching is gonna be the presentation. So it.
So if we've got a video going down here on this TV, they can see it up here as well?
Absolutely, correct.
The same thing?
Mm-hmm. Right, it's like a closed feed, whatever is going here can also go online. So those could be also streamed live.
On the same invoice that you're looking at right now, it says five TVs. So it would be one for up there.
Right.
And does this TV have to be replaced or is it?
Absolutely, yeah, that one has to go.
And then I would think just one other.
There's also on the other quote, there's a projector that is quoted out. And it's a laser projector with a pretty big screen, a hundred and twenty inches. So you can use that on the overflow, you can use that in here. That's, that's, uh. That's in the other quote. I think the screen's turned down to three, the last time I spoke to, to the owner who came in originally. And I think we took two of them out.
And. The one that's one oh three, one nine three, that is your invoice, your quote number?
Correct.
It's all the same thing, it's just this one is fancier?
No.
What, what is this, this, cause I have this marked as this one, the, the one that ends in one ninety-three, I have this marked as the commission room.
That is correct.
And I have this one that ends in six oh nine is the overflow?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
But to make the overflow work, we do need some of these products that are now over here.
Okay.
Which would be the barcode mainly. Not the Logitech, not two of them, just one, cause there's only one overflow, not two. But the barcode you would need to. Now, the other one, on the first line, you'll see the microphones. This is a combo set. It's a handheld and lapels. It's the same brand that you currently have. But it is the, the newer version. The digital version. So you'll have a total of sixteen microphones, but only eight feeds. In other words, you can't use all sixteen. You can use a combination of lapels and, and the handheld. Uh, the next line is the digital mixing console. And that is what the microphones go connected to. And this is what allows me to split the signal to the PA here. Uh, and then send the signal out to the video encoding and then also send signal out to the clerk. Below that, I believe it is the speakers that we would be replacing. These are, uh, a better speaker than what is currently installed in here. It's newer, it has a better coverage. Uh, with these speakers, we would eliminate some of that feedback just because of the way they're designed. And then we have a network and Wi-Fi configuration that allows us to connect to your barcode. And the network configuration allows us to show your IT how to troubleshoot the connection for the streaming. Uh, next we have, I believe is an amplifier, which is a, I was telling Abraham that I've been at HB for twenty-two years. That, uh, the owner will make notes and pass them on to the clerk and they'll write them in. And it's like, eh, that's not what it was supposed to say. It's a JBL CSA twenty-three hundred. And that's the amplifier for the speakers. Below that is the, uh, I believe it's the, the cameras. Three cameras with zoom over SDI. SDI is a serial digital interface, which basically is a digital feed going to the mixer. Uh, which is the next item. And actually I skipped over the joystick controller. That is for my pan tilt zoom cameras. And it, that is a joystick controller that gives me zoom and preset positions. Which makes the operation pretty easy on that. And then I'll skip over to the data video mixer SDI. That's a switcher and that's what basically my video feed goes into that and mixes those. And then below that is my encoder. Uh, once we put our URL in the stream key, you just hit stream and it, and it sends the stream out to, uh, either YouTube or Facebook. I sell quite a bit of these for churches and they work really good. This also has the capability of putting an SD card and recording the, the, the meeting, so that's a good option. And then below that is that projector, the mount and the screen. Uh, that's a really nice projector, it's laser, very little maintenance on those. They're not like the older ones that you need to replace the lamp. Typically, these last about five to ten years.
So is that gonna be taking the place of that? Is that what you'd be doing whenever we're showing something, it would come out of projector?
Right, right, that, that's one of the, uh, options that we have.
So you still have to operate it over there like you did now?
Right.
Or they could just bring us a little USB thing and we plug it in and we use it off of there?
The, with the barcode, basically it's, it's wireless. Let's suppose you have a barcode system connected. I would grab my phone or my iPad and I would join the network and I would project. Let's say I have a PC or a tablet, it'll do Miracast, Chromecast and Airplane. Not only that, but if I have like a meeting with barcode, it'll join the, the room. And we could do a Teams meeting off my, my system. And so if I need to, to present something, I can just use my device. I have a laptop, this comes with a dongle and it goes in through USB and that becomes the external display. So they can just display right to it. So let's say one of you wants to display, you handle the dongle, connect it to your computer and you're on the screen. And you're basically not on the screen, you're on the network of video feed. And then he can put you on the screen upstairs, downstairs, picture in picture. We could do all that with a barcode. So that gives the, the user, it's something what they call BYOD, BYOD, bring your own device. So you bring in a cell phone, a tablet, a laptop, Mac, PC, Android, iOS, it doesn't really matter. And people ask me, well, I have that at home. You pay different licenses when you're at home and when you're using in a commercial application. That's why the price is kinda high. On the barcode, they pay for all the licenses that you need to, to stream cast.
And how long do those licenses last?
They're, they're grandfathered into the, to the, to the product. Yeah. And it's like technology, once technology changes, that's, that's how it goes. What I recommend is when you're updating, just keep in mind not to update until you know exactly why you're updating. But that's why you have an IT department. If you have any questions, this is basically the way the system is trying to bring it up to make it easy for you to use. Where it's something you don't think about.
Well.
I've been doing some for a lot of years and when they're looking at me, it's cause I'm not doing something right. We don't wanna be looking at him going.
I can sit and have a conversation on ripping like we did earlier, but this stuff you don't, that over here. So I'm, I'm looking back in the back and making sure everything is. So, Abe, is this something that you're gonna be comfortable with? That's my next deal. They can put it in, but you gotta operate it, you and Mike.
We also, I'm sorry, we also provide a training and anything that we install, we provide service for a year. And I've, I've installed in Carlsbad and they need something, I go check it out, make sure we take care of it. Uh, we don't let a lot of time pass by. We wanna make sure we take care of it. That's one of the things that we pride ourselves in, is that when you have an outside company come in, it can take, can take weeks for somebody to come take care of something. And we've dealt with, in El Paso, with DEA, with FBI, order protection. And if they have an issue, we're, we're there. And HB's been around since eighty-five and it's taken a while for them to realize that, hey, you can trust the local guys to, to do the job.
So let me ask you one question. So you put it in, we have a little issue. What's your warranty? I mean, I'm sure you're gonna come up here some, but then after that, it's gonna be trip charges and, and, or how long will you support this? How long will you support this system you put in here?
Uh, I mentioned, I started at HB in 2001, actual supporting systems I installed in 2001. Um, with, there is a fee. Uh, usually with a travel fee, there will be a travel fee, um, and a service fee. I'd have to double-check with the owner what that would be. In El Paso, because of the area, we charge anywhere between 75 to 100 an hour. Um, so you would figure it would be half that for travel. So it would be anywhere between 35 to 50 for travel time, and then minimum of an hour. Right. Um, if it takes longer than that, um, any, we would let you know ahead of time. We won't, you won't get slammed with a bill, and, oh yeah, we were here for a week. No.
How long's your warranty?
So each manufacturer has a, a warranty, I'm sorry, I don't turn around, I just want to make sure that my phone captures it. But each, each manufacturer, uh, product has a manufacturer's warranty. We are an authorized dealer, so anything that goes through us, you can, you can, um, register it. Uh, some of these, and then look at QSC speakers, have a six-year warranty. Most of this electronic has about a one-year warranty. Uh, the projector will have three to five-year warranty. Uh, Barco does have like a five-year warranty. Um, but, uh, data video, I believe they have a three-year warranty. So everything has different warranties, and what we could do is, I can, um, put that in a document, so you can know what the warranties are on each item. Um, even after that, we would still service them. The equipment that we sell, um, before I worked at HB, which is a long time ago, before 2001, I worked at a pawn shop. And it was really hard to sell equipment with no warranty. When I started working at HB, it was like, oh wow, this is great, this stuff has warranty and it's name brand. And that made my job a lot easier with, when you sell something that you believe in, that you know it's going to work. Uh, for the most part, if there's any kind of warranty issues, you can go through us, or you can go directly to the manufacturer. And in this case, probably direct to manufacturer would be easier. But then we can give you all that contact information. Not a problem.
I have written here, Room 101, a conference phone from my last meeting. And, and that 101 is down here for conference room, right? And-
I think that was for that, um, yeah, like a conference phone we were going to put in that other room.
It's because we have a conference phone already on the ground with our phone project, that's why it wasn't needed.
Okay, so we don't need that. Okay. So for one year, you would come up and take care of us pretty good? And then after that, then we'd start getting charged, the trip charge and the service fees and all that?
Right. Um, but when something's installed properly, um, we don't go back. It's, 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 that's why I like to do it right the first time. Um, usually when we go back, it's more like training, uh, new, something that came up. Usually when you put a new system in, you don't know what to expect until it actually happens, and then we address those issues. But we try to foresee, using our experience, what can happen. And then do the training to how to, uh, resolve those issues. Uh, and sometimes things are out of our control. And this has happened to me where Facebook does a change, and then there I am, receiving a lot of calls Sunday morning because Facebook made a change, and all my encoders go right to Facebook. So then I have to figure it out and get on the phone and, and fix it. Now, I might take pride in, in providing that support.
Yeah, especially when, when Facebook makes changes, yes, I have, I have noticed that too.
It's not good.
I mean, I do feel, feel comfortable, I mean, uh, once, uh, if it's approved and we get our, and of course, that's part of the training, it's just program and training. So, uh, once we get the training and get all of our IT department familiarized with the new system, and, and troubleshoot and test everything before we, you know, before we put it up there, you know?
Okay.
And, and one thing to take advantage of the one year is when you do the initial training, I always like to do a follow-up, because that's when you already used it and you already have questions. First time I put it in, there really isn't any questions, because you don't know what to expect. And then we put it to, to use, and we're like, how do you do this, and what if this happens? Then I start, uh, addressing those. Something happened to me at, at the zoo with a bird show. I was, I wasn't expecting what was going to happen. The headset mic has to be on this side, because the bird, like, all those little things, you don't, you don't realize till, till it's happening.
You didn't want the bird talking in the mic?
No, he bites it, he bites the mic, so... And that, that's what puts HB aside, we have a lot of experience with different projects and, and different applications and how to make it work.
HB, are they also contacted by the commission, or is it going to be more of a-
I think we have, uh, we have purchased, uh, these, as a matter of fact, these mi- these old microphones were purchased too. So I believe there's still progress.
I just don't feel comfortable spending money on an overflow room that may not be utilized but once a year.
In the past, it would have been utilized every meeting.
We're trying not to do that.
If, we also provide a rental service, so if you ever have a, a foreseeable that you need to do an overflow, our production team can come in and create an overflow. We do the baton death march, and we create overflows and delays and all that, so that's something we can provide.
That might be an idea.
Yep.
And save up on the initial cost and only use it as, as you need it.
As you need it.
And we have a full production team.
How long does it need to be able to do that?
Uh, a week, um, but I think we could probably turn it around in two to three days, but a week would be i- ideal.
Because we would never, anything we do is usually a two-week, whenever we decide we're going to have something big like that?
If it's a regular meeting, we usually know a week and a half prior, because we know if it's a hot topic that hits the agenda. Often you schedule a special meeting, three days' notice, 72 hours. That would probably be the shortest. Emergency meetings, which require 24-hour notice, aren't usually hot topics, they're just pressing detrimental to our budget for instance.
And my team could handle a 72-hour. It's just, uh, costs would go up. Because then I have to scramble my guys and tell them, no, this is, this is the incentive to get it going now.
Would you need to have some infrastructure in place to be able to do something like that?
Maybe, well, it just depends, I, I, we have generators, we have everything. Um, but we can, we can lay some infrastructure already, do some cabling, so we just come in and plug in. Because we, there is conduit that's, that is enough for us, we can come in and fish it every time. Or we can, uh, put that cable already in and leave it in place. It's pretty simple, in overflow room, the way things work nowadays is video and audio is encoded together, and it goes over one cable. And we can just leave the interface here and go up there and just plug it in, put our screens up. Now, I can make it something that's, that's very easy to set up.
We could get the initial wiring, everything put in on-
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, we, we could do that. I'll make sure they put that in.
And that cost for a, a trip to come up here and do that?
At the-
Not instead installing, but just kind of a estimate?
Anywhere between, I would like to say about $900. We'll take care of communication back and forth. Uh, something less, we're just, the infrastructure's already in place, you're looking at about $500 to come set it up, put the screens in. Right, it's just no overflow, you're only seeing what's happening down here. And when it's, when it's talking back, that's where it gets a little bit more tricky. Right, and we wouldn't say tricky, more details involved, more, more connections, more configuration.
I agree with you in the past, we had a need for that most every meeting. Um, I'd like to hope we're not going to have that issue anymore. We don't replicate that often anymore. Public hearings seem to be when we get the biggest turnout. It's always worked for us to use the Flic. It definitely holds enough people, and they accommodate us most all of the time. And we're pretty flexible wh- when we have those meetings, that we can work with them to find a time that works. I don't know, will we use it every time? We, we typically don't fill this room anymore.
And it's not just the expense of the room, but staff, we have to be up there. An- another law enforcement officer will have to be up there, so it's other resources we're paying for just to have that room.
I would kind of like to see if it's at least bred for it? Where all you got to do is come and plug it in and it's done, keep the charges minimal on, if we need it?
Absolutely. It would be a one-man job for us, you know, on upstairs, maybe two, two guys to get up there. Um, put a couple TVs and some truss in, and then connect the, the, either a microphone to feed back down here, uh, and then a camera to feed back down here, and then a, a screen or two. That's something that we can, that we can provide, um, service. So that way you don't have to make the, the investment and have it sit up there for like, she said, one or two meetings. Instead, just use those one or two meetings. And then you see it's being used, then the infrastructure's already set, where we just come in and put in, uh, equipment.
That makes more sense.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so you need to re- redo your permission to pre-wire that and have that ready, or will that-
I'll include it.
Put that in?
Yeah.
Good.
And I've got my page so barked up between which one was upstairs and which one is the commission chamber?
The, the only thing that I would add over here would be a Barco that I don't see on this side. That's the 1895.
Can you just rebuild it a little?
Yeah. And then I'll, I will specify pre-wire for overflow production.
So I've got it marked, we only need one of those Barcos.
Correct.
Okay. And only one of the Logitech meetups?
If we're doing the overflow.
Okay, so that's not needed at all?
No.
Okay. And then the TVs-
It just depends, we're, well, how many are going to go in this room, or are we just doing the projector in this room? If we're only doing the projector in this room, the TVs aren't needed.
And how much was the projector?
I believe it is $2,395. And I, I, I am very proud of my pricing, because I'm very competitive. So if you go online and you Google that projector, it's a $3,000 projector, I'm going $600 off.
But we could not have our projectors use whatever USB they bring in here and-
And then see it where?
If they plug it in there and see it there, is that the way that, I mean, it's what works now?
Right. The idea is to kind of streamline that, where I don't even have to hand them nothing, I just project.
So that, that Barco deal, is that just going to need one or need two?
Just one.
Just one, okay.
So it looks like to me about $25.5 for the commission chambers only.
Mm-hmm. Hmm, well, we would have to add the Barco.
Okay, so plus?
I used to have to have tax on top of that, I didn't. Will you, are you, if you back some of the stuff?
I didn't include the tax. This is, and then, um, the, the three Zoom SDIs, we wouldn't need those anymore. We do need those.
Yes.
Okay.
Those are your cameras.
And the ceiling white? That's the third item, there's six of them?
Those are speakers.
So then this page 103193?
Yes.
We would have to add the Barco for 1895.
Correct.
And so that number of 27 plus 1895, so 30?
Right. And I would include the pre-wire for access for us to. And it's basically, these run a couple lines up there, and... And if you ever need the overflow, we know what there is here, and we just send the guys over. Or I come with one of the guys.
And I was, I was actually looking earlier this week, I was looking at some of this equipment, and, I mean, it's pretty competitive. Like, for example, this Allen and Heath mixer, it was, it was like 2,500, and with them, I was like surprised that it was-
And I'll be honest, I'm a little too surprised. So I want to, I want to revisit that just to make double, triple, because prices have changed dramatically for our industry. Um, so I want to make sure that that price is right, so let me get back to you on that one. It, it'll definitely won't be the full price that you would see online, it would be discounted. But this one kind of raises a flag for me. I'll, I'll give, if you don't mind, I can make a phone call real quick.
Chase's boss?
Sure, go for it.
Let me ask, um...
Okay.
Hey, I'm here for the commissioners, I'm presenting.
We're going to take a quick break.
And on the projector, I would, my recommendation being a little bit smaller than the hundred and twenty inches. Hundred and twenty inches, a whole wall. A whole wall.
And we don't need that in here?
Is a little bit smaller, yeah.
Maybe this room isn't that big.
So I'll bring it out to a hundred inches.
So if we have somebody, I guess we're working.
Oh, yeah? Still good prices?
No.
No?
Twenty-two hundred now.
Going from sixteen hundred to twenty-two hundred?
Yep.
And if you go online, it went up to twenty-five hundred. I'm looking at discount.
So I've got twenty-nine, seven, forty-one, seventy-one. Adding the barcode and adding the price difference. Twenty-nine, seven, forty-one, seventy-one?
He said he didn't think we needed as big a screen, so that might save us some money.
You think?
But it's because of the materials and the size and the shipping and all that, there's not much of a difference.
About the same.
Twenty dollars if anything. Yeah, those things seem, um, more the size is, it has to do with how it would look in here. And a hundred and twenty would just be like too, too big. Not, not comfortable to, to watch.
What is that, like a sixty inch?
That's about a sixty, sixty-five, yeah. So if you double that diagonally, that covers the whole wall. But if we add another couple forty inches, then we have a nice, comfortable size projector to go here. And it'd be really easy to, for everybody in the room to see. We could also add a couple room monitors or not, you're not doing this.
Okay. So thirty thousand for this room and a cable upstairs?
Right. Prep room. And, and that's what I'll, I'll work my quote to be at around thirty thousand. Right, if I can cap that around there and then we have the infrastructure set for, uh, production or rental of overflow. Uh, your meetings are usually Thursdays? So we can set up, um, Wednesday and pick up Thursday. If the meeting is, we can even come in really early. Just depends on facilities letting us in.
You know, that figured out?
I think so. So we're saying thirty thousand.
Do you want to see my notes? Thirty.
I know it wasn't much, but didn't you want to speak her up in the ceiling to catch all those sounds back there?
I'll, I'll include that in the, right up. And that only goes to the clerk. Do you, do you need to hear what they're speaking out over on this side?
No. They usually yell.
It's more to capture the meeting. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt is out of state inspecting if our truck is being built for one of the departments.
So no emergency services?
But we will have another budget meeting on May fourth. You can always pick it up then.
Okay.
You should have got the calendar when we started.
I did.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yes, you did. Okay, so Mark, you're up. Sixty-three in this book.
Greetings and salutations from the best public outdoor shooting range in all of Otero County.
That's right.
Mark Douglas, director.
The only question we have here on news is just the Georgia range. Is that fine?
Twenty-two.
You're saying that the law enforcement operations will use this also?
Uh, they can use it as an overflow. What we're looking at is, oh dear. You got it, Mike. See if that helps.
He turned it this way, the IT guy. He's made it.
Yeah, go through there.
Yeah, like that.
All right, let's try that. I'm game for that. Let's see if that works. So what we're looking at is expanding the capacity of the range. And by putting a, uh, another one hundred yard range there, this is going to be for special events like the Project Appleseed. The four-H, uh, group, uh, can use that. We can also have our instructors use it. It can be used by the general public and then of course, for law enforcement, they can use it as well. We're just running into capacity issues right now. And it's, it's been an ever-growing situation for the, for the facilities here. The last major expansion was two thousand and two, when the range more than doubled in size. It went from three shooting bays to a total of eight shooting bays. And that was, uh, do my math, that was twenty-one years ago. So we're looking here to, to get the county to, asking you for some money so we can build a, a one hundred yard range. There's another meeting we're going to have that deals with the New Mexico Economic Development Department. I've got some funds from them.
I saw that.
But I, unfortunately, I, I got bumped to a lower tier, which took away about three hundred thousand dollars, which means I'm coming to you with my hat out for some funding.
But you're still getting the ninety-nine thousand?
One dollar short of a hundred thousand.
So what are you doing with that money?
So that one is primarily going to the construction of four more general purpose bays. Because those are the bays that are used on the weekends the most by the general public and the firearms instructors. It's also an overflow for law enforcement. So that's the one where the shooting club is willing to put up about twenty-five thousand dollars. They may put up a little more. But that's, most of that money is going for that project. Also to improve the parking at the, uh, three hundred and sixty yard range, to make that so that more people can use it. And I was hoping, but I feel it's going to get squashed, that I would have enough funds to do the hundred yard range. I don't think I'm going to have enough funding to do the hundred yard range with that grant.
So you're asking for forty thousand additional to be able to do that?
I'm asking for forty thousand dollars so that we can build a one hundred yard shooting bay.
I'm gonna surprise you.
Hang on, let me hold on to the table. Okay, hit me.
This is the no guy, you know?
I know.
But I'm kinda leaning in your way, Mark.
Thank you.
Me too.
Thank you.
That's me too.
All right, that was easy.
Okay. I brought my red button out.
All right, well, that's good. Yeah, all rescue guys are getting the no.
Took all your money.
Sorry, buddy.
Clap the net next.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And the community thanks you.
You're welcome. Kind of detention center?
Commissioners, this is also the same quote for the TBRDA, the two new vehicles. So it should actually be four vehicles, two for each department. Um, I gave you a copy of that quote for the Dr. Ringos.
They were just updated.
Correct.
I don't either.
What do you mean, did you?
Forty-two, three. Let me just write it on this price here.
So this is two vehicles at this price for the detention center, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
How many miles do your current vehicles have?
Over a hundred and fifty thousand or more.
And will those go to another department?
No, we're still utilizing.
Oh, you're still gonna? I think the radios we said yes to last month already? So just the vehicle updated prices is all we were waiting on?
Mm-hmm.
Yep? Yes.
Okay, good. I think we're good. That was easy. Yay! Tom? Cooking with gas now.
Yes. I'm hungry. Oh, my page is all messed up too here on this one. Let's start all over.
You gotta say yes to everything.
Is that what it was? I've got a lot of scratches.
Okay, with all my, I got all kinds of, yeah. The only thing that we were, was back to the, the dual AP machine. Is that the only thing that we're questioning here?
Yeah, I guess.
And why were we waiting on that?
Because we don't want a snap-on machine.
You didn't want one?
No.
A snap-on machine. Amy doesn't want a snap-on machine.
Beryl had found one cheap before.
So are you good with it?
I'm, I'm good with her numbers. If she can find me one, that's fine.
I did, if that way. I will. It's here somewhere. I would, I will dig in.
We haven't till July one to find it.
Okay.
How much cheaper is it?
It was half.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, I don't want you by two. No, I'm joking.
Then they'll come out with a new freon.
Well, yeah.
So I have...
Happy with that? That one?
I haven't seen the specs on the one that Amy has found, so if she sold on it and it does both, the new and the old refrigerants, I don't see why not.
I found it for sixty-eight hundred dollars is what I have written here. And then something, we agreed to do the sixty-five thousand dollar year lease on the blade? That was already done, okay. And then the yard dump with plow I have on here, wait?
Yes, because we're gonna go to the auction in August.
Okay. And on the ditch truck I have on here, hold?
The ditch crew?
The ditch truck, the great, the great one.
Yeah, we're holding that now.
Okay.
I think that's it.
I think so.
All right, thank you, Tom. Get your piece out?
Tulare Rosa Basin Radio?
Regional.
Regional.
Dispatch.
Dispatch authority. Can I make a motion to throw away all acronyms? All of them?
I've got it on fifty-seven. I don't think we had a separate one for... Oh, yeah, it's on eighty-five. The other was the sheriff's office.
This is someone with eighty-five.
You know what? Is this the book that we had that changes in the pages?
Yes.
Do this, ma'am, where we have...
The only thing that they were asking for, the, the two new vehicles, the same quote that I gave you for the detention centers, that quote is for all of them. And then the only other thing they had on there was the, uh, the new hires.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
Just the two vehicles?
Yeah.
We get four vehicles from the same salesman. Do we get like a twenty percent discount?
Wish we could.
Twist his arm, I mean.
State contract is what, film state contract, that's, that's the price.
Tell him he doesn't need commission on one vehicle?
While, while we're here, commissioners, if I could, real quick, introduce you. This is John Barney.
Hi, Don.
That's why I recognize you.
He's the new TSAT director. Um, he got into town yesterday. He's been unloading trucks and moving into a house and all that, so we snagged him to come down. Introduce you to, to him.
Welcome to New Mexico.
Yes.
Little different from Florida.
It is.
Little drier. And we don't have hurricanes because we don't have water.
And today you can see our mountains.
Yes, no dirt.
He drove in during the, the windstorm.
Oh, you say, what am I doing?
I'm glad he kept coming.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
He got to Texas and I figured he's gonna turn that lead. But that, uh, basically on the vehicles, what we've kind of always done with, um, with the dispatch center and stuff, well, we've always supplied them with a vehicle, uh, through the sheriff's office, um, any trainings or anything like that. So, um, figured with, with him and, and the expansion, you know, the extra people and stuff like that, they're going to need a, a training vehicle. They're going to need, you know, a hem vehicle and stuff. So we just, uh, I would ask for the, for the two vehicles for them to be able to utilize on their own.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the vehicles. The way you're right there, the five telecommunication specialists. Do we all have those in place already or this is? This next thing down on the new hires and stuff?
Okay.
Commissioners, I was just gonna say that, uh, essentially the current dispatchers that are in the sheriff's office, they're budgeted for in the sheriff's office will all be, the budget will move over to this new fund, the TBRDA, Tulare Rosa Basin Regional Dispatch Authority. So all of our dispatchers will move over there and then all of the city dispatchers will transfer in. However, the way it's set up the first year, the city is going to pay fifty percent of the entire cost of the, of the whole department, not just the salaries and benefits, but any other operational costs. So essentially the, the dispatchers are coming over from the city, um, are gonna be paid for by the city the first year. And then it'll go to, uh, based upon the number of calls. And then it'll go to, based upon the number of calls in each location, as to how, the percentage-wise of how much each location will pay. So I believe it's Cloudcroft, the city, and then the rest of the budget would come from Otero County based upon calls. So these would be five additional new telecom specialists that they would need to be able to fill their shifts. So that, that's what this cost is, and that should be on.
But didn't you just say our old dispatchers are gonna become these dispatches?
In addition to our current dispatchers, and in addition to the transfers coming over from the city, it would be five additional, to make sure that they have full staffing for all of their shifts.
But then, we're gonna save the money that we had on all the other dispatchers that just came over here to become these people, these those people now. If his, if his dispatch is coming over here to be these telecommunications specialists, what are we doing with that position?
I think this is in addition to.
That's gone out of my budget now.
Yeah.
It's already taken out, yes?
Yes, it's already taken out.
Okay.
Those positions are out of my budget, they're now included in TBRDA.
I was making sure we didn't have a budget for one person, but two positions. Okay.
And if I could, like, John, you could say a little bit about kind of the organization chart, you know, and all this stuff that he's kind of put together as, to maybe explain a little better on why we need these extra positions here.
So the five additional dispatchers from the city and the county merging into one center, we're gonna need additional positions to staff all the radio positions. Minimal staffing for day shift is gonna be seven dispatchers on the floor. Evening shift will be five dispatchers, which will end up patching certain channels together, meaning the fire EMS and maybe AMR in one channel during the evenings. We'll have myself at the top of this as the director. I'm gonna have an operations manager that's gonna oversee the floor of operations side, and then four additional supervisors for each shift that is designated. And then underneath, we'll have a couple CTOs to train new people that are coming into the agency, along with the floor dispatchers to operate the radio channels that are needed. What we're looking at, we're gonna have seven positions on the floor, we'll have probably six radio positions. That seventh person will be a dedicated call taker throughout the day, so we have effective communication for the citizens of Otero County. As long as nine ones are coming in, we're trying to get to answer the phone calls as fast as we can. Also, allow to have the dispatchers be able to dedicate themselves to the radio channels for the safety of the officers and their deputies, along with the fire personnel that are responding to the calls. So you have good communication throughout the organization in the city.
So is that? Is it just Alamo, Goreo, and Otero County? Is it, Cloudcroft will be dispatching off there, Tulare Rosa, anybody else?
Just, just Cloudcroft. Tulare Rosa did not want to participate in it. But we already dispatched for Cloudcroft, so we'll just add them to the mix. And, you know, we talked about numbers, you know, after one year in service, we'll kind of look at the numbers and kind of base who's paying what on the calls for service. And I think the numbers that Sergeant Emery got me, we're within two or three hundred of being exactly the same, you know, as the city right now, so. And I know with their numbers over there right now, we've got a few more numbers than they do, so we're actually, you know, helping them out quite a bit within the city. So our numbers have gone up, theirs kind of come down just a little bit, so. But I think if we go that, that full year and then look at the numbers, it'll give us a good idea of who's gonna win. And what percentages will go to each entity there.
All right. Anything else? Nope, nope. Okay, I think we're good.
Do you want to address the sergeant's position or else?
Sure.
What we've got is a, we have been working with one investigator. We had one detective for, what, three and a half years? We were, we were on the verge of burning him out. We were just working him to death. I have since moved a second into the detective division, and I think starting this seventeenth, I believe, I'll have a third going in. We, we have a need for those three investigators. With everything that's going on, there's, there's, you know, the sexual assault crimes and all this stuff. A deputy on patrol does not have the adequate time to do a very thorough investigation on that. You know, homicides, some of our high priority stuff. We're gonna kick that to the investigations division, where they have a lot of time that they can, you know, investigate these thoroughly, and you'll see it all the way through prosecution. Just from my experience in the past, I was in investigations at PD, there was five of us up there. If you don't have a supervisor overseeing that division right there, it's gonna get mixed. It's gonna get grouped up. I'm asking for that supervisor position, so that I can put a sergeant over there that can assist with the investigations, but can also oversee caseload, seeing that it's kind of distributed, you know, evenly, to where we don't get somebody just hammered with calls. But I, I just need somebody to oversee that division and keep track of all this stuff. I don't like it when these cases, you know, something falls through the cracks, and then we've got a victim that didn't get, you know, the justice and stuff that they need, so. I need that position to oversee this, this division.
Crime is certainly not going down in Otero County.
No, it's not. That's why, that's why we have three investigators now instead of one.
Okay, I'm in agreement to this. Any questions?
Hey, great.
Good? Okay, we're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you guys do.
Nice to meet you, John.
I'm glad you're here.
It's good meeting you.
You too.
Jumped around a little bit.
Oh, okay. Okay, admin and finance?
Yes. So I know that I had briefly spoken about this at our last meeting. The reason I'm asking for this position is because our payroll and accounts payable positions, with ever increasing numbers of employees for payroll, as well as just increasing expenses, we've got additional departments, we've got additional people traveling. There's just a larger volume of expenses coming through every week. And both my payroll tech and my AP tech are, they're the only ones who do those positions. We don't really have a, a primary backup for them. Also, previously, the grant person was part of finance, and so that person took the, like, the legislative grants, community services grants, and they, that person helped with all the financial portion of that, as far as submitting reimbursement requests and things like that. That person is now, that grant position is now reporting directly to the county manager, to Pamela, and they will not be doing any of that financial portion, portion. They will literally just be writing our grants, trying to get us funding. So due to that, Kathy, my accounting specialist, she has taken on a lot of the functioning of the, the financial portion of the grants. So in addition to that, all the legislative grants, the federal grants, the community services grants were kind of split up amongst the two of us, as well as the fixed assets. Fixed assets used to be handled by purchasing, and just through doing our financial audits, we have come to realize that it's best for a lot of that to be handled through finance, with portions of it handled by purchasing, so that there's some segregation of duties with that. So in addition to the grants, all of the fixed assets, and then also all of our vendors, we have not gone through and updated and purged vendors in, I don't think, ever. So she is, it's a constant process whereby she is sending out letters requesting new information from all of our current vendors, vendors that we've used within like the last three years, so that we can update their information, so that at the end of the year, if we need to send them a ten ninety-nine, we're not getting some notice from the IRS coming back saying that there's incorrect tax ID number or other things. So, so as the accounting specialist, while she was, that position is the backup for payroll and for accounts payable, it's just very difficult to have the time to truly, really train and really work on that. Payroll is, is complicated, it's difficult, it changes every week. Rachel does an amazing job, Wendy does an amazing job in accounts payable, but I really need a primary backup, and a part-time person would be able to, on the payroll weeks, just work with Rachel, and just understand, just work on the payroll and be able to allow Rachel to maybe take a two-week vacation at some time. Right now, because of our bi-weekly payroll, she's really kind of stuck to maybe taking a week off, maybe a three-day weekend here or there, it's difficult for her to do that. Same thing with Wendy, as far as accounts payable. On the non-payroll weeks, this individual could work with Wendy and really understand all the different vendors. There's a lot of different situations, understanding the terms, when things need to be paid, and, and be able to do a accounts payable check run if needed. The same thing with payroll, I want this person to be able to completely do an entire payroll. So that's the reason that I'm looking for that, is just to take some of the pressure off those two girls, have a backup in place, because if for some reason something happened to Rachel, or if she left right now, I don't have somebody that is completely trained in that. Yes, there's, you know, we, we know little bits and pieces of it, but to be able to pay people and do it correctly and really understand the process, I need someone that can devote the time to just that, and not have a lot of other things going on that they have to be concerned with. So this would just be a part-time position. As far as space, right now, I know emergency services is still in the building. We don't really have any additional office space. However, like RB did with, with his legal assistant, there's room, I have a large office. You know I have a large office. There is room to put another desk in there and put a part-time person in there, if there's no other room for them.
I only have one question, I'm just trying to get it on my mind, but as far as the payroll and all that, I thought this time clock stuff was supposed to make your life easier.
It will help, because she won't be physically entering paper timesheets anymore. However, she's still gonna have to review everything. She's still going to have to, because we want other paper timesheets. She'll be running reports from Time Clock Plus, verifying that what comes out of Time Clock Plus is what is actually uploaded into the MUNIS payroll system. And so she's still gonna have to review everything, it's gonna take some time to do that. And then the rest of the payroll process is the same. So every payroll, we have new hires coming on, we have people terming, we have people adding insurance, dropping insurance. There's a lot of different, different parameters and things that happen during just a regular payroll. Each quarter, there's additional reporting that has to be done for unemployment insurance, our quarterly federal tax, the nine forty-one report. We have, there's also allocations for, like, the uniforms. There is vehicle fringe benefits that are paid out, and it's, you have to know, you have to know your employees, you have to know their situation in order to make sure that they're paid right. And it just, it takes a little bit of time to really understand that and get to know that.
And these payroll companies, they really do help, but there's still a huge process to payroll. I mean, it's, it's not, I think everybody is.
The time clock system is just taking away the paper, a lot of the paper. And leave requests, things can be approved online, it'll make it a little more streamlined, a little bit easier, so that information is right there. But she's still gonna have to review it, she's still gonna have questions and have to call managers or possibly even employees, just to make sure if she has questions on what came out of the system, if they're, if they're short a little bit of time, you know, did they have a sick day that they didn't enter? Because we need to try and make them whole. Each week, for para purposes, you have to have your forty hours in for an eighty-hour employee. And if you don't, it's going to affect your retirement eventually. You're going to lose some of that contribution. And so we want to make sure that we have everything as correct as possible, so people don't lose that in the future. So yes, the, once it's imported into the system, the rest of the payroll process is just the same. She's still gonna have to, you know, go through the reports and, you know, submitting the insurance checks and making sure that the taxes are correct and all of that, so that portion doesn't change.
It's a, it's a big job. Payroll's a pain. Well, I don't have a problem with this, with getting you some help, especially since you're gonna have payroll help and accounts payable help. It's not just, just one department that's gonna get some help. And we've got to stay on top of those grants and stuff, because that's our lifeline.
And you're one of the offices that I visit that is always busy.
Right.
So, so I can get it back, I agree with it as well.
You good? Thank you. Maybe, maybe I come back this year and ask for the position to be changed to full-time, but I think at least part-time would really give us, it would take a lot of the pressure off.
At least on payroll weeks, she can be focused on payroll, and then the next week, she's accounts payable. I don't know if a full-time person would really be required. I mean, at some point, they might be, but maybe part-time will get you started.
We'll see how, how it goes, but I think part-time to begin would be very beneficial.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're pushing your luck, Mark.
What's that term? Go big or go home? Salutations again, from the best shooting range in all of Otero County, outdoor public shooting range.
So, let me give you my two cents on this. If you're getting five new ranges, you need two more part-time helpers.
Not only that, but I'm looking at, I'm looking at several things. I'm trying to juggle, the, the first thing that I'm trying to do is see if we can go back to a seven-day, seven-day-per-week operation. And to do that effectively, of course, you have to have boots on the ground. Currently, right now, we're in the March-through-November cycle of work. We're, we're showing up at seven-thirty in the morning to prep the facilities, ready for shooters to start at eight o'clock. And then we all leave at, at six-thirty, shooters and staff alike. So that's a, an eleven-hour day for pro operations, five days a week right now. Wintertime, you know, we, we shut down at five-thirty, so we end up going to a ten-hour day. But yeah, the, the staffing purpose is, is just so that we can increase our safety margins. This also covers that when people go on vacation, people call in sick, you know, they leave. What I run into sometimes is like when my Women on Target clinic is being held, we'll have like sixty additional people at the, on the facilities. I want that extra margin of, of, of safety. Sometimes, most of the time, my staff is all available. But this coming, this coming event, which will be next month, by the way, so mark that down on your calendar, March sixth, you know, I'm gonna be like two people shot.
Not March sixth.
No, May sixth, May sixth. Are you gonna be there?
I don't know.
Yeah, you should be out there.
But I know it's not gonna be March.
It's May sixth, March of sixth is gone. So that's why I'm asking for the, the two additional part-time employees. It takes a while to find them. It, it took me almost four months to fill my last position, just to find the, find the right person, but I needed people to apply, and that's the boat I was in.
Have you gone through Workforce Solutions at all? They've got a new program that I need to tell you about.
Send me the information. I will be more than happy to exploit that opportunity.
Because they actually pay for the entire salary.
Well, I like that even better.
Yeah, I'll send you the info.
Okay.
I just got it the other night.
Okay, I'm, I'm game for that.
I still think you need two more people to take care of all the venues for the, all that stuff, but.
What is your, I know you're addressing a gradual increase of fees. What do you expect the increase to be for the offset, to be able to afford two extra employees?
I don't know. I would have to, I would have to build a matrix and look at that. You know, our fees are not going to double, we're not going to do that. They're gonna go up, daily fees will most likely go from five dollars to about six-twenty-five. And that, and eventually, next year, work up another seventy-five cents, work up. And then, of course, membership fees would go up accordingly. I, I look at this as, you know, if we have, if we build the facilities and have value here, people will be, most people will be willing to pay extra for those, those, the value that we have at, at the facility.
And I know that you have a lot of volunteers, and volunteers are not dependable, because, and I get that.
Yes.
What is the liability with having volunteers do what a paid position would do per se?
I would have to get together with council and talk about that. I, I don't think that the county is set up for that, although we do have volunteer firefighters, but I think there's a separate policy for that, and you'd probably have to, we'd have to talk with Matt.
I mean, it seems like all the volunteers are all like NRA certified, or, you know, certified instructors and all that, so definitely adequate to be doing that. Does it make a difference?
It may. We would need to look at some of our insurance coverage and that nature to see if that is covered. it's that nature to see, um, i- if that is covered. I don't do, they have their own private insurance too as NRA instructors.
So the independent firearms instructors that use our facility, they have their own liability coverage. But most of the volunteers are not going to wanna spend a few hundred bucks per year to get their own liability insurance because they're volunteering. So, I, I mean, it's kind of a, it's kind of a, you know, dog chasing its tail situation. We want the volunteers, but we don't wanna encumber them with all kinds of costs to be volunteers. So it, I think, I think RB and I are gonna have to sit down and maybe look at the insurance policies to see if they allow for some kind of coverage. We do have our liability release that everybody signs, but this is the good old USA and you can sue anybody for any reason whenever you want. So again, I would, I would defer to legal counsel for, for a more accurate answer.
And so you get two part-time employees. Are they required to have any kind of certifications?
So currently, the, they are not mandated to have a minimum certification. What I have incurred or started last year was that when we have new hires, we provide them with an NRA Range Safety Officer class. So they do get certified, and that's, that's become my new minimum for my employees. Now, if they wanna go on and get certified for other stuff and it's, and it helps the range out, then I, I have, um, I have funds for that. So at, at a basic level, my range attendants are actually certified range safety officers.
I think when you have your sixty people out there at a big event, I think you do a great job keeping those that are not shooting back and waiting their turn and, and all of that. And I'm just gonna say, I think once you get the bays built and expand, I think that would be the time for asking for more employees, not now.
The, the ranges, they pretty much is a service the county's providing to the public. I don't, you're never gonna come out and make money on it. I don't think.
You're absolutely correct. I won't make money through the front door.
So this isn't, you gotta look at this as a service we're providing to the public for entertainment or whatever you wanna call it. The number is when you look, like I was looking, he's at twelve-hundred-and-thirty-six percent over your deal, so it's, like I said, it, it's hard for you to, for everybody to justify a lot of your wants and needs, but it is a service to the county, to the citizens of Otero County.
And I agree with that. I don't, I don't think the government should be in business at all, sort of like no profit, but I don't like seeing a huge deficit either.
Yeah, and that's why, like, you know, trying to generate revenue, there's obviously fees that can generate revenue, selling things there at the, at the office hats, shirts, sodas. But I think that what's gonna benefit the community is when we can have these large venues, these large events. Really, it's the city of Alamogordo that's gonna benefit because those folks stay in hotels, eat in restaurants. And all of that's basically here. So the county is really helping out the city and, you know, it's, the money flows. I'm not an expert on how many times the dollar bounces around before it's completely consumed. Some people say seven times. Listen, I was for a patrol agent. Math is not my high point. I, I reduce it down to five to make it easier for me to calculate. So, you know, they, the money that comes back to the community is, is the events that we can hold there. So expanding it, having a larger facility, yeah, I, I will, I will never break even. Now, I can increase the revenue to offset my, my expense, but it'll never, it'll never be right there, you know, one for one.
But I do feel with the part-time help, if you add in the five bays, there's gonna be more trash to pick up, more part-timers can do that and keep your full certified staff, people, safety people, attention to the rest of it. So there's, I don't know why I agree with additional part-time.
I agree with the additional help. I think you need it.
I'm gonna say, know what you're getting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Run all day, Mark.
I gotta go play the lottery.
Yeah, I'm gonna go get a lottery ticket.
Should I play my lottery app for a skin scare? Don't go there. Just joking, just joking.
Guess who's next? So you're wanting seven additional detention officers, but you can't fill the ones you have open.
Uh, the, the actual, I know I'm shorthand, but if I were to give a whole sheet of staff that are open, everything, new, um, um, I wouldn't have a good option. Because they've never been budgeted. Or, it minimally would take fourteen, but I figure if I had seven, I could modify it three times shift. That would be appropriate, um, at that asset.
So how far are you from where you need to be now, about with these seven?
No, I still have numerous positions. I mean, I just thought I'd put it in preparation that, I mean, if you guys wanna wait for the next budget cycle, that's fine.
Me personally, you're so far into the hole of empty spot, I, I hate to bug it out.
Right.
More empty spots until you get closer, and then I think we can adjust it that time. That's just my thing.
Yeah, that's, that's kinda what I was gonna say too. I mean, we, we could offset that with what's already in the budget for the ones that aren't filled.
It would be about, um, originally, you know, she knows for the fourteen on top of the current vacancies, we did reduce that to the seven, but that's still with full benefits, would be over four-hundred-seventy-eight thousand dollars. So getting close to half a million dollars, that could be used for, for other things currently, yeah.
Let's get my own.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's how I feel. It's not that I don't want you to have them, but with all the vacancies, I hate to build that into the budget on top of everything else and, and we won't use it for right now, so. So it's not a no, but it's a, not now. We gotta get them full first. Yeah, okay.
Can I meet you, Bill? RB, you had a very interesting proposal you figured out.
Which one was that?
The only one I got last night.
Well, one part of it, I guess.
You did a lot of work on that thing.
You wanna improvise a little on that?
Um, sure, um, I'll, um, for one, I'll provide the commissioners a memo that, um, outlined options for employee raises, raises, uh, cost of living allowance and, uh, interest, elected official pay raises as well. Um, the, uh, the bottom line is the economy sucks. What you were making, if you're making fifty-two thousand dollars in, um, twenty-twenty, you would now need to make like sixty-one thousand, uh, to be in the same place. And, um, and, uh, you know, and, and in addition to that, the loss of buying power, um, cost of goods have gone up, uh, groceries may be up from twenty-twenty-one to the end of this year, a whole twenty percent. Fuel is high, um, and it's probably gonna go higher because of OPEC, um, cutting, uh, oil, um, production, uh, so it's artificially going to raise the price. Um, and what this means, um, you know, for our employees, especially the lowest-paid employees, um, these, these cost increases are, are hitting them hardest. Um, and when our employees are, are worrying how they're gonna make ends meet, um, or put groceries on the table, they're not focused on the task for the county that they're doing. Um, and, uh, we have budgetary constraints, we can only do so much, but where we can, um, help our employees out with these conditions, um, it's going to make them more effective and focused employees. And it's also gonna help with retention, um, and attracting, um, other qualified applicants to those positions that we have that are empty. And I, I dug into that wage study that's done in twenty-twenty, and, uh, it showed that, uh, a lot of our, um, our pay for the majority of positions is over fifty percent of our positions, probably about seventy-five percent, uh, were being paid below the market average according to their study. Um, so that was in twenty-twenty. With the raises and, uh, COLA increases that the commissions approved. Since then, um, looking at that, a lot of these positions are now, uh, with the market average of twenty-twenty, but some still, uh, are below that. Um, so we got the, almost, and some of them, the twenty-twenty area, but since all this economic stuff has happened over the last three years, um, they're still below market average for what would be today. Um, and just to be in the same position, um, if they were at the market average in twenty-twenty, they would need a fifteen percent pay increase to just be in that same position today. So really, it's, um, it's a budgetary impossibility for you to get employees ahead. Any, any realistic raises that you can make are going to be just getting them back to the baseline. Uh, and that's the unfortunate circumstance that the, uh, the federal government, the Federal Reserve and their, uh, irrational, um, policies, uh, have put us in. And, you know, it's affecting all of us, but, um, we do have options for sourcing the money, uh, to pay for this. Um, we can raise GRT and, you know, taxation stuff. I don't like it. But, um, if you're going to, in that taxes, a sales tax is the most fair tax. It affects everyone equally. Uh, it's voluntary. Like, you have to choose to buy something and you're accepting that you have to pay a sales tax. Whereas income tax, property tax, those, those aren't voluntary decisions and they only affect certain sections of the, uh, of the population. But sales tax affects everyone and it also, um, uh, gets money from people passing through, uh, the area as well. So outsiders help pay for that too. So if we enacted the, uh, whole amount of, um, GRT that we have available to do without putting it on a referendum, um, it would bring in about two-point-two million dollars, um, I believe.
Yes.
And then we have, uh, other considerations, the cannabis tax, that's new income that's coming in. Um, and that was about a hundred-and-thirty-four thousand a year. So, uh, these are just sources that, um, that we have available, uh, that we can use to, um, fund whatever we'd really like, but, um...
Well, the way I read it, and, because State of New Mexico reduced one-eighth percent last June?
July.
July. And they're gonna do it again
This July.
Just July. So we have three-sixteenths percent of the whole harness, right?
Right. Well, it's, it's basically in additional, uh, capacity to implement gross receipts tax without having to do a referendum, three-sixteenths. So it's basically an eighth plus an additional sixteenth, which is about
Right.
two-point-two-five million in annual revenue.
It all broken down.
Right. So the public would really, it's gonna almost kind of worsen back out to a worse if we did that. They wouldn't really-
Yeah, and then the other thing to consider too is, um, after the Series 2017 bonds are paid off in twenty-twenty-eight, which is for the detention center, that eighth percent of gross receipts tax we're receiving to pay that debt service, that will go away. That will sunset. So we're gonna lose an eighth percent in twenty-twenty-eight. I realize that's a few years from now. However, um, if we were to at least implement this now and it's a wash, or even then, I guess it would, it would, it would end up being a wash, but, um, it's not going to be a large impact on the community because we're already paying that right now.
Yeah. So this was a very encouraging deal to me. But what the employees of the county has to understand is we've used our resources right here. It's not gonna be another deal next year, fifteen percent or... This is bringing it up, and we've pretty much tapped out on our resources for more raises. So they, it's gonna have to be, you're gonna have to be happy with this for a little while until we can do that.
One other, I'm sorry. One other thing I wanted to mention was by cutting the ditch crew and the, the total of fourteen detention officers for the new construction, that is saving us almost one-and-a-half million dollars, like one-million-four-hundred-fifty-one thousand dollars right there in salaries and benefits.
But at some point,
At some point.
I wanna get that ditch crew back on, so I can't take that out of my mind.
And possibly, possibly the same with the detention center. Once we fill the current vacancies, then we're gonna need to, uh, fill the, the positions for the new construction as well. Just, I'd throw that out there.
But it, it, I think it's a way for us to try to bring the employees up. But like I say, it just can't happen every year.
Right.
There's no way it can work.
No. No, the general fund, I don't think it could, could sustain that unless something drastic happens with our, you know, gross receipts tax revenue, or there's some new revenue stream that's, you know, we're not thinking of or we don't know about at this point.
And, and I'm, I'm thinking, I'm not okay with just a five percent straight across the board or whatever it's decided on, ten percent. Um, just for the simple fact, you know, we have, um, people that are out there. We have people that are out there, um, that qualified CDL drivers and, and equipment operators and all that that are making fifteen dollars an hour, fourteen dollars an hour. We need to get them up to standards to be able to compete with me. And, um, we have people that are making, you know, thirty, twenty-five dollars an hour, thirty dollars an hour that, you know, are, may not be their cost of living, what they expect, but we need to get the lower up first.
Yeah, this proposal he had here was a fifteen percent across the board.
Right. And, and I just don't think, and I hate to pick and choose positions or whatever that deserve raises and who doesn't. I don't, I don't wanna be like that. It's just, I wanna get the, those qualified. If we want a CDL driver in whatever department, the convenience center, road department, or whatever, we have to compete with people that are hiring and paying twenty dollars an hour. And that's an important operating part of our county.
Well, I agree with you on that. But I have pros and cons on that both. You, you bring the lower in, and guys that have been there for a long time, you give the lower end a raise, and I say the lower end, on the-
Pay scale.
The pay scale, and then these guys are still sitting here right here. It's kind of a slap in the face to them. The only way I can, and I've said this for the last four years, the only way I can justify this is to, an even deal. Some are gonna get less than what they wanted, some are gonna get way more than what they wanted. That's at the fifteen, what we were just talking about right there.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the other options right here, if we keep going up to five and seven, we'll never get to the, the whatever year rating. If we go to fifteen here, three years from now, we'll probably still be at the fifteen percent at the two-thousand-twenty-three level. Then we'll have to worry about it again. But I, I don't wanna slap the ones that've been there in the face, been there a long time in the face saying, you know, we, you know, there's two ways to look at it.
Yep.
May I make a suggestion? Perhaps instead of doing a percentage across the board, do a flat amount across the board. So whatever it comes out to, a dollar, a dollar, a thirty cent, whatever it is, so that the ones that are making fifty thousand are getting a huger rate than the ones that are making thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
Or somebody making ninety thousand isn't gonna get fifteen percent, they're gonna get five dollars, or whatever that dollar amount you choose is. So it's a bigger, it's a More equitable. More equitable, so that the people that are making thirty thousand get five dollars more an hour, but yet the person that's making ninety thousand still gets that same amount.
Yes, that's what I was trying to say.
How would you do that? Take the number of employees and divide it up?
Yeah, I, I didn't calculate it, other than just the percentage at this point. So I have to take a, a look and see how that would affect. Because then, you know, the lower paid employees, it would be essentially a larger percentage. And then it would be a, a smaller percentage for those who, who make more.
But
So.
And I understand that, but again, that's kind of a slap in the face to the people that make more because they're, well, I'm, I'm gonna use Tom as an example. He's been, he, he's got guys that's been there for a long time and, and their, their range of pay is very high. Some of them are former recruiters, CDL drivers, and they make this. See, that's why I want a microphone back there, so I can hear.
Hear what's going on back there.
What if instead of doing fifteen percent, we break it down into a ten percent, take the additional five percent, and apply that to your scales for your lower end employees, to the ones like Julian, the boys that he arrays and his CDL drivers. Buy that money up and then give them a scale job. That way they're all getting, whether they've been there five years, ten years, they're all getting a percentage, and then they get that scale job on top of it.
Too bad he's watched.
You already did back there.
This is ragged, he makes more money than I do.
I was not ragged.
Yes, you were.
Good morning, commissioners. So my proposal was for the road shop and for Ralph's guys, is bring the lower paid employees up, the starting truck drivers, to a flat sixteen dollars an hour, which is basically a fifty cent an hour raise, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
More, more or less. And then for the ones to make it fair, for the ones that have been there longer term, give them a seven percent, which would be basically the ones that are making sixteen now would be seven percent on top of that. And that way it's a little more fair to them, don't do the seven percent across the board. Bring the bottom ones up, so that Ralph and I, and I'll use our two departments, can compete with an MDOT as far as what we're paying truck driver operators. And the ones that have been there a little bit longer, just give them a bump up above that.
Basically what I just said.
So I just pulled one out of here, twenty dollars an hour, add two dollars, that's, you know, ten percent. You know, so if we added the two dollars, like you said, then that's fair for the top, they get their two dollars, and it raises up, and it's the ten percent equation is what we'd be using.
To give it a, a realistic cut here, Harvey's talking about fifty K a year for, you know, the average employee. My average truck driver's making thirty-six thousand a year.
And go to Walmart.
Yeah, exactly.
And if you bump them up fifty cents an hour, that's only a thousand forty dollars more a year.
I, I understand that, but it also puts us on to compete at least with an MDOT with our benefits. Now, we can't, like you say, we can't compete with Walmart, I mean, that's a billion, multi-billion dollar corporation. I can't compete with them, we never will.
There's a lot of ways to, to skin like that.
Yep.
What we do, we should, we should be very purposeful and strategic about it. It might be a good idea that, you're open to it today, you're open to that fifteen percent. The number crunchers can go back and, and do different calculations on this to see how it could shake out for various employees and then provide you a very detailed breakdown, so you can give that full consideration. I'm not good with numbers, I had to deal with fractions to write this memo.
I bet you did great.
You did an awesome job.
Had to remember how to do it too. Can you play with that?
Yeah.
A dollar, or two dollars, or, you know, something like that, okay. And then if we wanted to address the GRT tax situation, I'm assuming you put that on the agenda and then we vote on it? That's not something that goes to the ballot?
We have to do an ordinance, and we also have to give notification to tax and revenue. Unfortunately, we missed the deadline to be able to have it enacted July first, that was March thirty-first. We have till September thirtieth to be able to do all the, jump through all the hoops to get it to be enacted January first.
Can you have that by the May fourth meeting?
I'm sorry?
Can you have that by the May fourth meeting?
Oh, yeah. Yes, not a problem.
Can you do it in different options to where we can see what's gonna?
Yes. You have suggestions as, like what options you want to see, or?
I'd say two dollars.
We need to get the entry level. I mean, everybody, that's why you work, just to make money.
Right.
But we want to be able to keep the ones that we do the hiring, so.
Are we talking all positions, or are we talking just certain positions? Are we, I mean, 'cause I don't know, I know the state in the past has talked about making the minimum wage, you know, increasing it to sixteen dollars an hour. I think it will eventually hit fifteen dollars an hour, did they ever decide that?
It was voted down.
So they did, I, I don't know what year that's supposed to happen off the top of my head. Do we want to have all beginning positions start at, I don't know, a certain dollar per hour? Or, I mean, I guess I could look at that.
And we're at, right now we're twelve, what, what, what are we at? What, what is the entry level on the?
I'm sorry.
Our entry level right now, we raise to a year or two.
Um, it's anywhere from twelve dollars an hour to sixteen dollars an hour, depending on the position. Like for the rifle range part-time employees up there, it's twelve dollars an hour is starting.
No benefit, no, just a twenty hour?
No.
And I know we have the contract, we have the union with the sheriff's office that we'll need to take into consideration.
We have eight employees at the convenience center that make under fourteen fifty an hour. Is that correct? I was getting to you, I was getting to you.
The, the thing is that today's economy, that fourteen dollars an hour is almost, if you're a family, a husband, wife, and a baby, you can't make it on that. It's almost, I'm not saying that badly, I'm just saying that from the poverty level.
And, you know, Walmart's hiring at, I'm not sure, what, fifteen, sixteen, at least, yeah. So we're competing with them too.
I, I, I want to take care of all of our employees, we gotta get our very important, but lowly paid employees up to par too. So I think an option, two dollars across the board, and maybe a dollar fifty across the board. And, and then the percentages we've already got, that's.
We, we could probably do that multiple options, we could do a dollar, two dollars, five dollars, and that way you have a full spectrum to consider and play with. Just consideration of Tom's employee that makes thirty-six thousand a year, that would now be thirty thousand dollars. If they're making thirty-six thousand in 2020, they're essentially making thirty thousand now, based on the loss of the dollar.
Okay, so if you can work on that, that'd be great, that's gonna bring us to the elected official part of it.
So along with the other information I provided you, I, I got as much information as I could for all the comparable other class B high counties, so you could see what they're paying their elected officials. We were, we're below average on the breakdown and all of that, and we're towards the bottom of the list as far as, and we're not the lowest, but.
Yeah, wasn't there like three the lowest?
I don't want to have to give you any more math today, but can you put like population in your comparisons? Nope.
That wouldn't, that, that wouldn't take much to.
Just, that would be a little bit, you know, so we can see more comparatively the population and how, where we stand there.
We submit the, the treasurer's bill that has the information on how many tax bills each county treasurer sends out, and what the dollar amount in property tax collection is, that may be helpful for you guys.
Did you have something, John Paul?
I don't know if y'all are aware, but to obtain a CDL now, to go to school for it, no longer is it an employer, trained an individual, and then they can just take their test, the two-part test to obtain a CDL. Now you have to go, I would understand, so the, from the colleges, it's sixty-eight thousand dollars for a six-week course. So now CDL drivers are getting harder to find because it's hard to begin, if it just doesn't exist.
That's cool.
And for an employer, just to put that out, you have to do more like Walmart or something that you can afford to.
That's a bunch.
So they've become more valuable.
Tom, you're not training, you're not schooling and getting drivers with their CDLs, you're only hiring them. If they don't have a CDL, they're just driving the little, little barrels around.
Pro rec, I only have four employees that are non-CDL employees, the rest of my employees have to be CDL holders. Working with an MDOT, I do have the opportunity to do quote-unquote in-house, but they still have to be able to go over the laws, well, to their training, because the MDOT's training is two weeks or so over there. And there is a local gentleman that does the driver test part of it. But it's still, it's, it takes, for us to do it that way, it'd take almost three, four months to get an in-house employee trained to get a CDL.
It'd be worth, it's worth four months, I feel.
I shouldn't let mine go back then.
To go to school, that's definitely good.
On, on the elected official pay, I calculated a few of them, and the increase to the twenty eighteen maximum from the twenty thirteen was a fifteen percent. So if you maxed them out, it would be a fifteen percent increase.
Some of our elected officials are a pain in the butt. I don't know, I don't know about that.
Is there any, Becca?
So are we gonna stay with the, go up to the two thousand eight?
I don't think elected officials need raises. I'm sorry.
You're gonna, you're gonna hear their voice from.
I know, I already hear it. You turned out.
I haven't had a raise in, well, you got, you got a raise six years ago. Two years, two years ago.
Yeah, two years.
Prior to that, elected officials in the sheriff's county have not had a raise in over ten years.
We can actually give raises every year to employees, every year, they're coming up, they're gonna have to.
We've already got, I can point out just several employees that make more than elected officials just by being a county employee, which.
Employees should make more than us.
So, yeah.
You, you can sell it to the other two, I just think that, that being an elected official is, is servitude to the community.
I, I will reiterate, however, your positions as commissioners are set policy. The jobs of the other elected officials, Sheriff Black, the county clerk, the county assessor, the county treasurer are full-time positions.
Well, this is full-time.
Full-time, any day. And to be entrusted with the responsibilities and the statutes that they are required to uphold, to not feel that they are worthy of getting what the two thousand and eighteen salary match was.
It's not about worthiness, it's just.
Well, that's insulting, as Gerald said, we're, you know, we want to keep it across the board with employees, but you're slapping your elected officials in the face.
And honestly, as a potential candidate for the big sheriff election, there's no incentive for me to run. I don't know why we just don't catch up with the times and move all the elected officials up to where they should be. Between that and the county still holds the ordinance for the ninety-five percent cap on the chief deputy, I think that needs to be repealed, or like one or three counties in the state that still have that ordinance. And most of the chief deputies, your undersheriff, their positions, their chief deputy positions, or currently capped at ninety-five percent around the state, they're all in six figures, unfortunately. They're your operations manager, I mean, they're the ones that pick up where they're slack.
I really feel if you keep the wages up with, I mean, they don't have to be skyrocketing, but you'll get more people that will run for elections on these.
If you don't move it up, I mean, I, there's no desire for me to run, yeah, I'm gonna take a case up the front list to become an elected official, but taking a twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollar pay cut, there's no incentive to do that. And same part of that with the inability for them to return to work, I can't find a good undersheriff, because I'm asking them to take even bigger pay cuts. So you're putting somebody like me, that could be a potential candidate, to align, but it's not worth it.
Also, just something else to think about, these elected official increases would not go into effect until fiscal year twenty-five. So it would not hit the twenty-four budget, it would hit twenty-five. And that would just be for the three that would be running for, in, in twenty twenty-four, that would be elected as of January first, twenty twenty-five, and then in twenty twenty-seven, it would be the other five positions.
The, the only reason why I wanted to get it in now to where if, if, if the wages were there and if somebody was thinking about running, when I started thinking about running, I came in and sat in these meetings for a year prior before the election. It would at least give them the incentive to see if that's what they really want to do. Not that we have to pay it then, but they would know what it's all about and how much they're getting paid. After looking at the wages and stuff, Sheriff Black to deputies that make more money than Sheriff Black, he's the sheriff. He's the one who takes all the heat, and there's, but. And for the twenty-six thousand that I make and the heat that I take, it's not for the money.
That's right, that's right.
I've been tested for that for the last four years, I, I have no paycheck, and you guys pick for that?
And, and that's, you know, we groom locals because we want to keep our community local and decisions and everything. And just like it was two years ago, there was somebody gonna run that just moved to New Mexico for a representative position, and then they found out that, oh my goodness, it doesn't get paid, no way do I want that. And so we, we kind of, you know, they don't have the investment in New Mexico to care, all they wanted was the paycheck. So that's something else to consider. I don't know, I'm still. But I agree, I mean, the undersheriff should, you know, Sean works his fanny off.
I don't know, I, I really feel that it should be a, the three of us is a different story because we all have different jobs, but every one of those out there, there is a full-time job for them. for them. And it's still, they have to pay the price with the people the same as we do. I, I kinda feel it should be brought up. I think you'll get a higher standard. Let me rephrase that, I didn't say that right. I think you'll get more, more people, a bigger group of people coming in and I didn't, I did not mean that how it fell out.
How it fell out. I, I think we need to, I think we need to get it up to the twenty eighteen standards. I mean, it won't really affect me, I mean, depending on if I run again or not, but, and that's not why I would do it, but I think the people that work the full-time positions deserve it.
And it's not gonna affect Sheriff Black or me or, but it's gonna be the ones coming up to try to get, you want, it would be nice to have a big pool of people to be able to have to run, you know?
We rather manage candidates before.
Anyway, that's my two cents.
It's a, Commissioner would like, I can take that and have a resolution for the May meeting put together and, and then you can discuss and debate the exact details. I was going to put in there, reaffirming the deputies getting ninety-five percent, that's in our personnel ordinance, but I, I've looked at a few of the other resolutions across the state and I've seen anywhere from eighty-five, ninety and ninety-five percent. So if you could, John, if you could get me the information of areas where they're, where they're not following that, that would be something. So Burnalee, Chavis was one of them. Us, Chavis and Sierra. Okay, well, it's definitely something, as we're doing this, that should be considered in the dress.
So we're gonna have to not only agree on this today, but if on the agenda for next Thursday.
You don't vote on anything today. You don't have to agree today, you don't have to do it by vote.
Right, but next Thursday, we're gonna have to either like.
In May, we do it in May, next month.
We, I thought we put that on for the vote, we had to put it on, come across the board to vote the two thousand and eighteen for the elected officials.
Yeah, I, I called you and talked about putting that on the May meeting so that we can discuss it here today first and, and see what, what you wanted to happen with it.
So you're gonna table, we're gonna bring this back on the May fourth with the other options and then.
The elected officials you'll address at the May regular meeting, the other salaries at the May fourth budget meeting. Is that at nine o'clock again? I'm recording. Okay, so is that it?
Oh, I apologize, I had one thing that came up in the link yesterday that's not on the agenda, but we are getting requests for dealing with dilapidated buildings. Commissioner Mathely has a dilapidated building he wants dealt with. Last year, you passed the ordinance giving the, giving us the authority to deal with those dilapidated buildings, but the thing that's missing is budgeting for it and unfortunately it's expensive. If we wanna take out some of these mobile homes or falling down buildings, the cost range anywhere from fifteen to thirty thousand a building, depending on the presence of asbestos or, or other hazardous materials, but just we either contract it or however we do it, there's costs associated with it and to do it, we need to budget for it. And, you know, it could be a hundred and fifty thousand a year and we deal with five buildings a year. It's gonna take us a hundred years to, to get the county cleaned up, but that, that's.
But it's a start and, and RB, I've been talking to Matt, been talking with Tom, been talking with a bunch. Once a building is, this particular building that I've been working with, once it was inspected to not have asbestos, Matt said he would bring in his fire crew and they would have a training on the building and then it'd be a very minimal cleanup after that. If you just tore a building down the way it is, yes, it could be very expensive. So I think if a hundred and fifty would be a good starting area and see, and if, if we only got to do five or six or seven, but that's a good step to see what it would kinda average out and then work it from there, but something's gotta happen with some of this junk around this place, get it on hand.
And the fires are a good option, you know, provides training and keeps the cost down. But I've been told on some of the mobile homes, the trailer parks, they're too close together to do the burnings of those ones and those ones probably have asbestos, so those would be where the cost would go to the most probably. So, yeah, but we definitely need to, we wanna do it, put on the, off the budget for the year coming up.
It'd be nice to focus on some of the roads coming into town, you know, kinda get the area cleaned up.
You have to find a starting area and find, prioritize them, but, yeah, you're right. The trailer park deals is, that's gonna be a whole different beast right there, you're gonna have to pull it out if you're gonna burn it, try to get rid of it or whatever. I mean, I think it, it's a starting area, we're trying to create a cleanup program, it's gonna have to start somewhere.
Yeah, I agree.
It's either that or zoning. I mean, and, and I wanna do that either, but we've gotta clean it up.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, it's a mess.
And it's not just the south end, it's.
Well, north Florida. You know, north Florida's a mess, all the Pittman stuff out there, that's, look at that every day driving in.
He's not even around anymore.
Not anymore.
I need to backtrack.
So can you add that?
Yeah, a hundred and fifty thousand per year for essentially abandoned buildings.
Right.
That'll go in the emergency services budget.
Okay.
So, the gentleman that, on that house that was interested, got an estimate and it was close to sixty thousand to demo it, that's clear the whole thing on and gone. So we're gonna have to play with this number and see what we can do. And I know Tom, cause they didn't have the manpower to do some of this, but we may have to try to do it in our alone too. Put it with the ditch crew.
Turn them fun.
So the other question on some of this is, Ralph, I'm glad you're here. If, if we start this program, this cleanup, these people that clean up or whatever, are they gonna be able to bring any of this material to your convenience centers or does it all have to go to either Mesa Verde or South?
Is it gonna be coming from a contractor?
Well, it could be.
That's the issue, if it comes from a contractor, then they have to pay to Mesa Verde because they have C and D landfill and we don't wanna compete with Mesa Verde, losing money because of them coming to us for free.
Okay, well, let me explain this particular situation.
I just don't wanna open a can of worms with them because in the past, they've accused us of taking contractors when they set up thorough drills specifically for contractors.
Right. This individual in this house was going to tear it down. Now, he has dump trucks and excavators and stuff like this. What if this dump truck was to come in with all this construction debris and it's an individual, he's a county resident?
We do accept people like that.
So what do you, do you dump that out back or is it?
No, we, we have the sheriff's department, it's been burned because everybody says that it's cooled off and it's not, there's certain fires, you know, we have to make sure that it's been weeks previous, but, yeah, we can take it, it's not a big deal.
But if it's.
We would have to take it into the containers probably, I wouldn't wanna put it in a big transport truck.
Yeah, I was just trying to see how you were going to accept, you know, an end dump or something that came out loaded with demoed stuff.
The whole house? We don't really have the container size to handle that.
Right.
Cause all container sizes we have are forty cubic yards, which is ending up being six to eight tons, enough to max our trucks can haul. Or we do a transport where we have a fifty-three foot trailer, but then we have to be careful on what we put in it because it's got a live floor trailer, uh, floor, so we gotta make sure whatever we put in there is situated in such a way that it can be offload, it can't be in there sideways or something like that.
And old trailer houses, can they be taken out there?
No.
No.
Usually anything with a title, we don't get involved.
Anything with a title like that has to be a clear, what do they call it? I know that like on your, Amy, your deal with taking junk cars when they were having that clunker thing, how do you get, like, it's the same thing, you gotta do something with the title, don't you ever?
So the agreement that I can make with like Musculara when we do our cleanup weeks, if they have a title, then I buy it from the people, so it's not so much as forcing them to clean it up, but if they don't have a title, I can't buy it, I can only remove it.
What do you do with it when you remove it?
I have to put it into a holding pen until I get the title perfected, which is up to seventy, seventy-five days usually.
And what happens if you don't ever get a title?
I have to get a title. That's not an option.
That's gonna be the biggest issue on mobile homes is the, I don't know how you get around that, but.
By the way, I, off the top of my head, I can't remember exactly what the process is, but I know that it's beaten down in other counties because across the state, dilapidated abandoned mobile homes are an issue.
Okay, because I know Rachel was telling me that that's a big problem on their side trying to, you know, get rid of those ones that they can deem and stuff like that.
I think it's a fifteen dollar permit that you get from the treasurer's office that allows that mobile home to be moved and, and all that. The title process is the same on a mobile home as it is a car.
There needs to be something dealt with in state law, I think, make people more responsible for cleaning this stuff up.
That, that's a great law.
Not a good idea.
But I have a question.
To clean your crap up, yeah.
Right. I'm going through the numbers from your email this morning. We have, I think, let me just read it one more time, one elected official that's actually making more than what your proposal is and one elected official is already making that amount. Everybody else would give raises. The clerk and the assessor.
They're making the two thousand and thirteen max, which was sixty-five, eight fifty-five and the new max was.
Oh, I see, okay. I'm double looking everywhere. Okay, got it.
If you look on this thing, it makes a little more stuff.
Okay, I was trying to, yeah, get organized.
Yeah, I don't think any of them are making more.
The probate judge was making more, close to the.
She was the closest one.
Anything else?
You have anything else?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. With that, we.
We got one more.
Oh, sorry.
Maybe I can talk to the landfill and see if we can make an arrangement with them to handle some private dump at the landfill, so they wouldn't have to bring it to us, they would just bring it out there.
That would help.
A lot of work, huh? Bypass the.
Yes.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
I'll pass that along.
Okay, all right, that is. You, okay.
Good afternoon, I am from the Hall Healthcare Services. I apologize for coming down a little late, but you guys were just talking about dilapidated properties and stuff like that in the county, so, um, our department, when, when someone passes away and they do have property, we do identify it, we do verify the deed. However, in most instances, there's not gonna be family members that take over a decedent's estate and what we do at the moment is place liens on the property and we don't get that reimbursement until, until it goes to auction, the tax auction generally. So there is a possibility that we could preemptively identify properties that have the potential to become dilapidated properties, especially mobile homes. Right now, we do not put liens on mobile homes. Sorry, I'm a little about, I ran it down. So there is that option, there is an option for the county to become, I'm not entirely sure, a creditor on an individual's estate. That's something that would have to require legal to get very involved with, I'm not sure how much you would wanna get involved in probate cases, but that's a possibility that we can pursue. Generally, it would have to go through district court because it'd have to be official, but if we wanna address these properties becoming problems and nuisances, this is at least one way that we can preemptively identify and then also put them back into the community for community use before they get to that point. There was one property a couple of years ago that I am, God, I felt so bad about it, that it was a beautiful home, but because there was no family to take on the estate and the property had no mortgage on it, it became vacant for years and windows were busted out, the yard itself became problematic, just the house fell apart, the roof, everything, it became a huge problem. It is something that when we updated the statute that governs the disposition program, that I really wanted more pathways for us to do something about these properties because they can be a problem, but I was outvoted on a lot of stuff. Most counties do not wanna get involved in this particular portion, but there is a problem and this is at least one way we can help with that issue. So I wanted to put that out there, that that is a possibility that this department can help with, rather than having to burn down a structure. So, but yeah, that was it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we are adjourned.